Six o'clock. Oh. Morning, just a little, right? So. Four and eight.
There's no coffee shop.
Yeah.
Oh, Deborah.
No, no, the one just below the.
Are we?
Helen says you're full of the day.
Are we good? Um, well.
I used to go.
I just don't want to start.
I go over and see Eddie every time I'm in this city.
Okay.
Hello. Hi there.
Um. There's proof there.
Do it make you nervous?
Until I knew who it was.
Do we have any big ones for you? Oh, yeah, yeah. Too old business. I'll send her. I mean, that can.
Pretty good. It's all right. You know what? Your comment. Michael and Conklin.
Oh, okay, good, sorry. I wasn't sure if we were live and ready to go, but good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Cape Breton Regional Municipality Special Council Meeting for Wednesday, March 31st, 2021. I want to begin by welcoming our presenters that we have today to speak with us and help guide us through this conversation. Senator Dan Christmas as well is going to be here, members of ship and our community as well. Thank you to our staff who have worked very diligently this week to accommodate many meetings, and we really appreciate that as a council. I do just want to set the intention for this meeting today a little bit. So, yes, we are here today to talk about the library, the proposed central library for the waterfront, but that is part of a larger project for waterfront development. We're excited to get an update from, I said ship, Harbor Royale, my apologies there before, Harbor Royale on the progress of that project and to see where the municipality stands in terms of moving portions of that project forward. So I will begin today with roll call, please. Present.
Here.
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 Present.
Here.
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 Thank you. Before we go on to the approval of the agenda, I just want to let folks know that recently I was appointed president of the NSFM while our current outgoing president is taking a leave right now, Emily Lutz. I am speaking in law amendments. I was already speaking there this morning to Bill 47. I have to pop out at 9:45 to speak to Bill 50, so our wonderful and capable deputy mayor is going to be filling the chair while I step out, so I apologize. It just kind of came up out of nowhere. So now we will move to the approval of the agenda, and there is a motion required.
So moved.
Second.
Moved, okay, just as a reminder, if you can, raise your hand when you move in second solely because of the mask. So I think it was moved by councillor Eldon McDonald, seconded by councillor Darren Brooksberger. Any discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, nay. Motion is carried. So we will now move to item three, funding commitments. Oh, thank you, sir. So right now, in terms of the central library, you will see here the excerpt from council minutes of October 7th, 2018. The only commitments that are made thus far in terms of the project is CBRM value, land value estimated at $3 million and $3 million possibly earmarked for CBRM capital funding pending budget discussions. I know our clerk has spent considerable time going through, clerk and staff, I'm sorry, going through various meeting minutes, making sure to see where that commitment lies. You can see all of that information here. That number has kind of shifted from $3 million and $3 million to $3 million and $4 million. Jennifer, I wonder if you, in our budget, what do we have allocated for library?
The library was included in future capital budget, which was never approved by council, so technically we don't have anything approved.
Okay, okay.
As far as capital budget goes.
No, I appreciate that clarity. Sorry to put you on the spot there, Jennifer. So we still do require a commitment of council to move forward on this project. It's very easy to have letters signed and what have you, but we as a council need to decide what is going to be committed to this project going forward. So I just want to make sure that everybody is clear where we stand in terms of our financial commitment. Right now, there is no commitment from the provincial government, and I do have a note from MP Kellaway saying the only avenue that he sees possible for funding from the federal government in his purview is going through the Infrastructure Canada Fund. So the process for that would be the municipality would deem this project a priority, we would submit an application to the province, the province then filters that up to the federal government. Does anybody else have any other information they want to share on this? Councillor Gillespie.
Thank you, Mayor Clark, and I'm sorry, Mayor Clark. I was just reading that, I'm sorry, Mayor McDougall.
It was bound to happen.
My apologies. The clarification needed on the land that is on the waterfront that is proposed for a possible library location, the valuation of that land is $3 million. It has been indicated to me and to several other people that that land would not count towards our total capital commitment. Is that correct?
Director McDonald, would you be able to speak to that?
I'll try, thank you, Madam Mayor. Depending on the funding formulas, each funding formula has its own requirements. Historically, I suspect that if a land portion was included, it would be part of a larger project that is either a project that would not be then owned by CBRM or would be part of a larger development. Recent funding formulas do not allow land as part of the contribution of funds from municipality. So I think there was some certainly confusion a few years ago on what was available. I think to the mayor's point, the important identification from this council would be how much council can afford towards a project, and typically that comes after the funding is announced. You'll see later on in the discussion that we've been requested this month from the federal government to provide some information back to the federal government on a questionnaire for a new fund. We've tried to get some detail on what is, what includes the components of that fund. We've not gotten any recent information other than fill out the questionnaire and the information will come. So I hope that, I tried to answer your question.
Okay, thank you. So when it comes to clarity, we still don't have a definitive answer on whether the land has that value and we can include it. So thank you, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. We'll go now to councillor Brooksberger.
Madam Mayor, we all received an email from the MP, Lloyd Kellaway, and he basically said that land could not be used as a portion of the project. He said that was all, I can find the email, but I think we all received that email from the MPs. So that was sort of a real downer for all of us when we seen that, because really what we have now is the cash that we committed earlier on of the $3 million, and as Jennifer pointed out, we never ever did it in the form of a motion, but we did agree that we would do that, I think, Jennifer, two years ago under a five-year plan. But when Mike said that to us, we knew we were going to have bigger troubles because that took $3 million away, so, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Is there any other questions or comments by council in regards to funding commitments? Okay, seeing none, we will then move on to the central library, item four, central library background information, so I'll turn it over to Director Bill Murphy.
Thank you, good morning, Deputy Mayor, good morning, council. Following information provided, such background on the recent activities to develop the new central library for CBRM. To the cooperation of the clerk's office, the current council was provided a detailed background of some 25 different council item, committee items on the library dating back to 2012. The last item is the presentation on the recently concluded study of service program and operational plan presented to the current council on January 26, 2021. A detailed review of the current and future requirements and a study of operating cost of a new build were highlights of the study. I do note that Lisa Murlock, Chief Librarian of the Cape Breton Library Board is here, and she would be able to answer council's questions detailed to the report. There have been many capital scenarios presented over the years. The last documented estimate is $31 million for a 37,000 square foot building, which was applied to in a co in 2018. A copy of that application is included with this presentation. The earlier referenced study of program operations cited a capital requirement of $31,300, $31,300,000 to $32,500,000 for a 45,000 square foot build. This represents a cost estimate of $480 to $500 per square foot. That is referenced on page 158 of the distributed information on the clerk. Given pre-COVID-19 conditions, those estimates would be consistent with earlier estimates. In a recent announcement by the Prime Minister of Canada to combat climate change, future public buildings will require high-energy efficient design, leading to net zero-ready standards for the National Building Code by 2030. In the attached email from the Director of Engineering and Public Works, the question of net zero requirements were outlined. High-efficient designs will require a minimum requirement of a LEEDs designation and could require building standards as high as net zero-ready. As example, a 10,000 square foot build, which would equivalent to one floor of our civic center, could have a net zero-ready all-in cost of $10 million. According to Atlas Group, the Canadian Construction Guide, the capital all-in net zero-ready estimate is to be $1,000 to $1,050 per square foot. The municipality is being requested to complete a questionnaire for the federal and provincial governments to identify projects that would qualify for energy upgrades, expansion or new bills that fit associated criteria. From what we know today, the program targets Canadian First Nations, provincial and municipally-owned buildings. It is anticipated that any provincial and federal funding formula will require a greenhouse gas mitigation assessment and a climate resilient assessment. CBRM senior management reviewed the latest capital priority list to be determined what project would meet the identified criteria. The 20 to 25 capital priority list, which councillor Brooksberger just referenced, was approved by council in June of 2020 and distributed to the current council during the budget workshops. On that list, three projects were identified. Center 200 upgrades and expansion, CBRM library and CBRM building efficiency upgrades meet the criteria to be included in the questionnaire. It is staff's recommendation that council include these three identified projects on information in completing the questionnaire for the federal government on green initiatives. So submitted, Mayor.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or comments for the director, councillor Eldon McDonald? I'm a little distracted by the noise there. Can you just speak up a little bit there, councillor?
Sorry.
Your mic.
I miss.
My apologies.
I miss Bill.
We're looking for a motion for the recommendation on Director Murphy's recommendation.
Can you just bear with me one moment, we're just looking, councillor Brooksberger, you're looking for some clarity?
I missed Bill, the three things as well with the noise. I'm just wondering if he could do that again, just the recommendations.
Yeah, Director, could you please just repeat the recommendation one more time? That is a little distracting, so.
Well, it's, yeah.
I'll speak up, councillor, thank you.
It is recommended that council direct staff to include the three identified projects, Center 200 upgrades and expansion, CBRM central library, and CBRM building efficiency upgrades to be included in information completing the federal questionnaire on green building initiatives.
You still look a little puzzled there, councillor.
It's okay, I'll figure it out, I think.
Okay, councillor McDonald.
I would move the recommendation as presented by Director Murphy.
So councillor McDonald, Eldon McDonald is moving the recommendation put forward by the director. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councillor Perush. Discussion on the motion. Councillor Brooksberger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I'm not really sure where that, the recommendations are coming from at this point. I guess I'm a little bit confused, and maybe through you, Madam Mayor, to our CAO or Director of Finance, if we were to accept the recommendations that are on the floor right now, are we accepting the full build and all this, or exactly where are we? I want to get a full understanding before we approve this, and not just for myself, there's new people around the table that I think could use that education.
This was as a result of a funding that had come out, and we were required to complete a questionnaire.
Yes.
That what projects that we had that we felt would qualify for this funding. Wayne is actually working on that, so Wayne may be able to add more, but that's the idea. It's really just a motion of council to say, go ahead, complete the questionnaire. These are three projects that we feel qualify for this funding on a go-forward. I think they're trying to look at the funding and what the criteria are going to be.
If I could add, yeah, so on page 18, your document is basically the information that I had sent through to Marie on March 14th. What we had received from the federal government was a request to fill out a questionnaire. The questionnaire is associated with a new fund that has not come out yet, but they're trying to determine how the fund is going to roll out. It's for green and inclusive community buildings. That's, when we went through the information that was provided, we had a number of questions that we had sent back to the federal government. We have not received, one of the key questions is what is the efficiency standard as a minimum standard for the funding that directly affects the costs. But what we did was we looked at the council approved from 2020, the list that council had approved for a five-year capital plan, approval for applications. In that, there were three projects that came forward as provided by Director Murphy. Center 200 upgrades and expansion for this facility, the CBRM central library, and CBRM buildings efficiency upgrades, which would be on a number of CBRM buildings across CBRM. So those three projects were included in the 2020 to 2025 capital plan approval to apply, and what we provided back to council is these would be the projects in that list that would qualify, and the recommendation is that we provide those in the questionnaire back to the federal government. From that, the details on the funding are going to come out, and then I suspect there'll be applications and further information provided at that time.
So with that, Madam Mayor, if I could, I guess, I guess what I'm wondering, so in order for us to apply, to actually apply for the funding, we'd have to be ready on our side in case it's approved. So I guess that's what I'm looking from, from our CAO and our Director of Finance, is that if this is approved, if we're into it for a third or the 27% formula, it's a $40 million build, as I understand from what Bill said, on the 20,000 square feet, and I'm sure that's, it includes a lot of things, but this morning on the way in, I checked out a price of a two-by-four-by-eight is $7.60 this morning. So I don't know how that's going to fit in with this, all these things we do have planned. But I'm wondering if we're actually applying for it, and this council approves it today, and it is approved, what do we do from there for our share? If I could.
So really, this is very preliminary. Wayne is really just filling out the questionnaire to see which projects are going to qualify, and they'll come back to say this is what qualifies, this is what you need to submit, and these are the, so if it is net zero-ready, they'll indicate at that time. So it's very preliminary. Once we hear back after we do the questionnaire, we would be coming back to council. So at some point, yes, we'll have to prioritize and we'll have to, we'll have to do a budget going out at least to five years, because most of these projects will be over more than one year. So we'd be coming back to council. So they're putting this questionnaire and does not commit us to any funding today.
Okay, thanks.
Any further discussion? Councillor Gordon McDonald.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and similar to what councillor Brooksberger was saying, and I see it in the recommendation that it's to direct staff to include the three identified projects information in completing the questionnaire. So this is basically to put those projects into a questionnaire that somebody's looking for, to ask, to let them know that we have these projects that we'd be looking toward getting looked, done in a future date. So again, just to be sure, this is not binding our hands into financing or to adding our funding or committing to funding in any way, shape or form?
That's correct. It's really putting those projects on the radar. They'll come back to say, yes, these qualify or they don't qualify. Here's what they have to be if you are going to apply, and then we'll come back to council. So it in no way binds us to any funding for any of these projects.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I believe councillor Eldon McDonald is next, and followed by Deputy Mayor Erle McMullin.
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. Just in reference to some of the questions around the application, that application, we received an email from MP Kellaway about maybe two weeks ago, somewhere thereabouts, with this new funding stream that would be coming on, and they want to gather that input of what municipalities across the country want that funding, I think, formula or funding process to look like, so they're seeking that input. Just in regards to the land value consideration issue, the, things could change with that new funding program. They're still putting the criteria together, so I think there's opportunities for us to revisit the combination of land versus cash. We won't know until the new structure is in place and the rules are in place, but they're currently building those, so it would be something I think that we should revisit and find out that potential. Also, if I could through you, Madam Mayor, to, speaking to Wayne's comments, and I'll go through you to Jennifer if I can, the 2020 list of priority projects, what would have been the last approved motion for those priority projects, the library being part of that list? What would have been the commitment at that time in 2020? Do you recall?
The only commitment that we have is for the capital budget that was passed for this current fiscal year. We didn't pre-approve any future capital budgets. What we did was the Director of Engineering and Public Works, along with some other staff, had identified, I guess, some shovel-ready projects in case there was stimulus money coming forward, and that's a laundry list, I believe, is in this package, which would have included the library in that list.
So and that would be the 2020 list?
It was part of the, I guess, the call for, in case the federal government announces some significant stimulus funding, what capital projects would be included from the municipality, or what are the community needs. It included Center 200, a bunch of wastewater infrastructure, including North Side on top of the Glace Bay, it included the library, it included, I said Center 200, other parks and grounds, ball field upgrades, Atlantic Memorial Park, some community infrastructure, a whole laundry list of items. And it was just, look, these are the various projects that we have in case there is federal stimulus money, we're ready to go with projects if funding is announced.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Deputy Mayor Erle McMullin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you to Marie, I suppose. I'm just, back to the motion that's on the floor for the questionnaire. When we fill out for these three projects, are they specific to how we see them at the moment, or are they just generalized? moment, or are they just generalized? Like, for example, if this build is going to be 32 mil, just because we're speaking of the library, it doesn't matter which project I pick, but if we're talking here in paper, the current cost is 32 million, if by some reason we don't get that kind of funding or we can't move forward, is the questionnaire beneficial all the same for whatever type of, we know the library regardless of how everything works. We have to do something with our library, so this questionnaire, is that going to benefit that regardless of what the plan is on the go-forward?
I believe it will, because at least we put it out there, it's on the radar, we'll know whether or not it's eligible or not. So yes, I do, I do believe it will.
So with all three projects, not just specific to the library, it's not specific to the design formats that we currently necessarily have? It's to the project in general?
Aside from the net zero-ready, which may come back as a requirement of the build, and it may not, we really don't know, and to councillor McDonald's comments, they're really trying to form the fund right now. So they're putting a questionnaire out there for all municipalities to say, here's what we have in the docket, and then they're going to look at them all, and then they're going to decide what qualifications, what requirements will be attached to this fund.
Okay, so it is just an overall, not necessarily very specific down to?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Councillor Steve Parsons.
Thank you, Mayor. Just the question is that we get all the information put on the table so we can have a clear understanding of the finances. I just have a question for the CFO. As it relates to our debt ratio capacity at the time that the library was thought about, I was privy to a letter of July fourteenth that was sent to Harbour Royal Development as relates to that process was, ran through our numbers in terms of debt ratio, and the number seven million was identified that we could potentially handle through our long-term capital debt projects. I just need clarification on that, please.
Yep. At the time of the discussion, while the library project wasn't specifically identified in the capital budget, it was identified as a project that could possibly fit under a funding program in a future year under ICIP through the, it was recreation and culture sector. While it wasn't identified specifically in the program, we were doing other various analysis on debt affordability through the Municipal Finance Corporation. And our fiscal, financial indicators, financial condition indicators for debt servicing costs indicated that even if we didn't have it in the capital budget and we decided to do it, our debt service capacity could absorb taking that. It wouldn't put us in a high-risk threshold for debt service costs.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Councillor Glenn Perusch.
I just, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a question, just for clarity purposes, I guess, with regards to what we're talking about. So we can't approve anything until we approve a budget? Is that, is that fair to say? I guess, through you to Marie.
Could you repeat that, please?
Just that we, that we really can't approve anything until we approve our budget? Is that, is that a fair statement to make?
Today, you can approve that we do put these three projects forward to the questionnaire, but yes, if they were to come forward and say, these are eligible, we'd have to come back to get budget approval on those.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Good discussion. Any further questions? Oh, sorry, councillor James Edwards.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just for clarity again, so with this questionnaire, if we submit it, it's just restricted to those three projects? So for example, if we decide not to approve anything, then that scratches one off the list, and now we're down to two? Or can we submit others? I'm sorry, through you, Madam Mayor, to CAO, please.
I'll defer to Wayne.
I could, I could try. So as I understand it, the questionnaire is trying to determine nationally if this type of program is going to provide targets that are currently in place federally for greenhouse gas emission reductions and a number of initiatives that are there. The other side of it, I suspect, has to do with cash flow, what projects are ready to go now, what projects will take four or five years to develop. They're trying to determine what the requirements for the funding are. Immediately after getting the information, we sent back a list of questions about what type of timeframe, cash flows, is the province involved? Is the province tied to this? All of those questions, we haven't received any answers as of yet. We were told that development of the fund is happening, and it's going to, some of the development is going to base on, be based on what they receive in the questionnaire. So I think to some of the questions that have been around the table, we do have long-term plans with numbers of projects we apply as funding becomes available. Certainly, funding provides a bit of direction to many of our projects. Without funding, a lot of our projects don't make it. We currently approve a five-year plan, but a very focused year-one of that plan every year to council. And I think, based on this funding, if we, if we qualify and the project needs more information, we would be back to council looking for approval if we need it. Otherwise, we would keep moving forward, trying to determine what, what the funding entails and what the requirements are.
Thank you, Director.
Any further questions, comments, discussion? Oh, my apologies. Councillor Lauren Green.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess the only question I have in terms of this questionnaire is, is there a timeframe on this? Is it restrictive to time? For example, if we don't have this submitted by a certain date? Do we have a timeline on this, on this criteria for the submission of the questionnaire? And do we, are we notified if it is in the queue, or what, what the shortfalls of any project are?
Councillor, there is a, there is a timeline for applying for the questionnaire. However, once the funding is developed, there'll be a call nationally for the projects that that will have timelines for those applications and as well timelines for cash flow. So I suspect this is really just a gathering activity by the federal government to determine what, what can, nationally can be constructed and built in the next number of years, and really look towards what the targets can be. If they're high-efficiency projects, I expect that they, they would be the projects they're looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor James Edwards, on your second opportunity.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to get clarity as well on the, on the land value for the, down at the waterfront. Has that land been appraised? We've been using the figure three million in correspondence. Is that an actual figure for the land value?
I, I don't know where that number came from. I wasn't, didn't involve in that.
That number has been used. I think what happened, and I'm not really sure where the number came from either, I believe it was extrapolated from other properties that were, that had sold on the waterfront. There was no actual appraisal, it was really just an estimation at the time.
Thank you.
Councillor Eldon McDonald, on your second opportunity.
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. Just for clarity, I guess, from my perspective on where that number may have come from, I can be corrected on this, but I believe it was from PVS-C, I think, on the amount that the property was valued at. I believe that's where that came from, to my knowledge.
If I could just add, based on some appraisals we had on other properties, now it's a few years ago, that number may be high compared to some properties we did have appraised.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Question.
Question has been called. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, nay. Motion is carried. So the recommendation is that council direct staff to include three identified projects information in completing the questionnaire for the federal government on green buildings and initiatives, so that can be sent off. Great step. We can now move to the next item on our agenda. So item number four, Central Library, oh my goodness, I'm sorry, I wasn't here. Item number five, pre-development agreement update from Harbour Royal Development Limited. So you do have slide packages there. I do want to welcome a crew of speakers today. So we have Brian Shabib, we have Spiro Trippas, we have Senator Christmas, and Kathleen Yurtison, who will be jointly presenting to council over the next thirty minutes to forty-five minutes. So the floor is yours.
Your worship and members of council, thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today for a conversation on the library. A public project that is a centerpiece of the development concept proposed by Harbour Royal Development Limited for the waterfront lands shared by CBRM and HRDL. My name is Brian Shabib. I am a professional engineer by training, retired, former managing director of MB Osprey Limited in North Sydney, and I am a longtime business associate of Martin Chernin. I've been involved with the HRDL project team from the outset. Other members of the HRDL team here with me are Mr Chernin, President of Harbour Royal, Spiro Trippas, Trippas Design Consultants, and Jim Woodruff. We are also very pleased to have Senator Dan Christmas and Chamber of Commerce CEO Kathleen Yurtison with us. And we are proposing that in the interest of efficiency and flow, we complete the presentations as a group, and then all will be available to answer any questions. The sequencing of the proposal will roughly follow the project background that we prepared and has been circulated to council. We recognize that there are many new faces at the council table, and that this session is intended to bring everyone to the same level of understanding in terms of the evolution of the project and its status. We trust that our presentation will help achieve that and explain, among other things, A, how a publicly owned and operated asset became part of the overall development project. There's no mystery here. It came on the back of nearly a decade of study and effort. In particular, we would like to acknowledge the previous work of the New Build Committee, who I believe would agree that the inclusion of the library has given the overall library effort much-needed focus and positive direction. Second, that we have been in a logical and necessary process of advancing Phase One of the project, have invested significant amounts of money and time, and are now at a point where council needs to make a decision to fund its share of the design development scope of work for the new library. A decision on capital funding comes later. And finally, that we need to collectively pause and really understand what it would mean for this community at this point in our nation's history if CBRM was to advance this library in full partnership with Unamaki First Nations. I will now ask Spiro Trippas to lead off the presentation with a review of the McConnell Library and the origins of the waterfront library project.
Good morning, everyone, Madam Mayor, councillors, Senator Dan Christmas, colleagues, guests. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak on the update on where we are with the Sydney Public Library and waterfront development process as it's transformed over the last ten years. We've prepared some slides. I see there is a slide projector up there. I assume I'm going to use the laptop here to advance, but you also have some documents printed off. So today, I'm going to, very cognizant of time, and just quickly bring everyone, try to bring everyone up to speed and start from the very beginning. The, I'd like to speak a few moments on the importance of our waterfront culturally, historically, economically. There's an interesting painting in this slide that shows the waterfront as it was in 1785 or envisioned at the time, and we question, why is our waterfront culturally significant? Well, for thousands of years, the Mi'kmaq have fished on its shores, they've encamped on the banks of our waterfront, is where they greeted the first settlers. It's where Debar first landed, and it's proven to be a vital part of not only our founding, but our history. In the early century, the way the waterfront was utilized was primarily for commerce. People had an intrinsic connection with their daily activities with the waterfront. We were very connected to the water. As time progressed, by mid-century, society's values in terms of how it regarded its waterfronts began to change. Industry became more inward-looking. We started looking towards our inner cores. The steel plant affected greatly how we treated our waterfront as industry shifted emphasis. And by the mid-century, we were starting to turn our back on the waterfront. It was really a place that you really didn't want to visit. As always happens, as generations come and go, and our values change, and there tends to be cultural transformations. Part of that, we began to see in the late nineteen hundreds on our waterfront, particularly with the decision to, where we used to have the police headquarters down on the Sydney Harbour, it was a single-story building, right across from the Esplanade Grill and a few other commercial entities. It was decided to boldly build the new civic center on top of that edifice. And it was only then that we began thinking of linking and promoting the Esplanade and the waterfront, and encouraging people to use it more. The yacht club was at the other end, but still there was lingering industries. The Scotsburn Dairy Plant was there, there's a few other plants, and there was still a lot of, you know, sewer and storm and industrial effluent issues at that time. As we move forward now to the last few decades, we have seen a very large transformation, particularly with the visions of previous mayors, Mayor Vince McLean, Mayor Manning McDonald, where a long-term vision for the waterfront developed. And we have come to a point in time now where our view of our waterfront is totally transformed from generations ago. We are now seeing it as a vibrant, active, a place to go and meet our neighbors, our friends. It's where we greet tourists and where we greet the world. And with the emphasis that's been placed over the last decade on our waterfront development, and it wasn't done in one fell swoop, it was a gradual development. Took a lot of work, it took a lot of political will. But what do we have now? We have a new community college being constructed. We had a major investment in the port cruise ship pavilion, and it is time to really move forward with the study as that was advanced by Akistics in 2014, and rethinking what this waterfront is going to mean for generations to come, and not just for who is using it now. And so we come to the McConnell Library. The McConnell Library was designed in the 1950s by a Halifax firm, C.D. Davidson. It was built with the bequest of the former mayor, James McConnell. It was a different era. It was a much more smaller, more intimate building. This used to be the front door. A lot of treatments have disappeared now, the copper finial, the granite steps, but it was well-suited for its time and for the needs of that era. This is the opening in 1960 that showed the, the This is the opening in 1960 that showed the scale and the kind of architectural promise of this building. You'll note that the Falmouth Street traffic direction enabled drop-off, safe passenger drop-off. There was at some point in time a change in that, and so now you can't disembark and enter that library safely. So, there were some changes that were conducted over the years. So, the changes primarily that had to be adapted in 1980, in the eighties, 1986, the architectural firm of Sims and Gavel was commissioned to expand the footprint of the building. And you can see that it was constrained by the topography. We've got a steep slope. The building is now also being asked in this eighties to house the regional library component as well as the bookmobile that's stored under an overhead shelter. And the architecture is a hybrid of styles. You can see that it's a real mishmash, but one thing that really strongly limits the site is it's very much encumbered by adjacent boundaries and the steep slopes. I'll speak to that in a moment. In 2011, the CBRM commissioned a feasibility and facility planning study to evaluate whether or not the building could be expanded and what would the programming be. We had the privilege of working on that study along with Jim Morganstern of DMA, a library consultant. And that, 2011, we undertook a critical evaluation of all the architectural and engineering systems in the building, as well as the programming requirements and the statistical needs based on the population and the service offerings and trying to predict back in 2011 where we may be in years to come. And at the end of that study, we presented that with a major public presentation. You can see that was in 2012, highly well-attended. Many of you may have been there at the time. And I think Mayor John Morgan essentially characterized it that the study indicated that the building has advanced to deterioration to the point where we can no longer meet the accessibility requirements with the new library. We cannot provide the level of service that is required. And in order to raise the bar with service offerings with our public library system for decades to come, we really have to look at, looking at a new site and contemplate a new build. The current building has three different levels, is unsafe with staff having to transport books from level to level. Most recently, the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system was upgraded, but there are still deficiencies in the rest of the infrastructure. Most pressing, I would say, is the accessibility issues. Narrow ramps. It wasn't meant, it wasn't built in an era where universal accessibility was a consideration in planning. And so, we're left with those legacies, and really, society has evolved in terms of what expectations are for universal access for all people. So, the consensus amongst most of the stakeholders in 2012 was that further investigation be conducted into the feasibility of constructing a new facility on an alternate site. Further time went on, and in 2016, there was another report commissioned by CBRM to investigate what would be the possibilities of advancing a new build or perhaps a cohabitation, shared tenancy, or perhaps even a renovation? And what would those look like from a programming and a capital cost perspective? And in 2016, this report was prepared once again by our firm and Jim Morganstern, DMA, as well as Breton Chartered Accountants, John Nash. In your handout, there is a listing there of the three options that outlined what the potential capital costs would be for each of the three options. And I think it's important for me to point out that the 2016 report was not a site selection analysis. The mandate was not to pick a preferred site or to name sites. The report essentially looked at three options, and these sites seemed to be unencumbered. They were large and commodious. They could, they seemed to have the accessibility issues that we were looking at, and that they were being discussed in the public realm quite a bit. And so, we offered these three, but that is not to say that these three were the only choices available. And that was kind of brought forth that really, these are the types of costs that we were looking at at the time. You can see in that chart that there was the cost of the building itself. There was consideration given to building with leadership and energy and environmental design, the LEED certification rating. There was furniture budgets, there were site cost allowances, and there was soft-cost predictions. And at that time, we were looking at construction costs back in 2016 of approximately $26 million for a new build to a retrofit cost of about $18 million. It was in that report that the site for the waterfront site was listed as a potential candidate, and it served as kind of the genesis to working on what had been envisioned by Akiistics in terms of a possible use on our waterfront. And it was with, from that new standalone building vision rendering that we prepared that HRDL decided to embark on this journey of seeing whether or not we could build a new build, actually, on this site to fruition. And so, a lot of work has been completed since 2016, and what I'd like to do now is call on Brian to come and pick up on where we went from this point in time.
Thank you, Spiro. I will now take you through the lead-up to the Harbour Royal Development Proposal and our role in the Waterfront Library Project. In the fall of 2017, CBRM issued a public request for expressions of interest for the development of its waterfront lands running between the Holiday Inn and the Joan Harris Site bordering the Esplanade. You can see that on your screen and in your handout, the request for expressions of interest. The only piece of land in this area not owned by CBRM is owned by Harbour Royal, a one-acre site at the foot of Dorchester Street. Harbour Royal had been considering the construction of an apartment building on its parcel of land, but saw merit in an integrated development approach that would optimize the collective effort and achieve the best possible results for the overall downtown revitalization objectives. Excuse me. The CBRM request for proposals promoted the values and concepts of the Akiistics Report, which Spiro had spoken to vote. This was elaborated on by Spiro's comments on the 2016 feasibility study commissioned by CBRM. HRL's team responded to CBRM's request for expressions of interest with a bold, multi-use vision that included then-new library, new central library in roughly the same location as identified in the CBRM 2016 feasibility study. On your screen now, you'll see the concept design proposed by HRDL. CBRM council unanimously endorsed the vision in principle and accepted HRDL's proposal, noting that it was consistent with the recommendations contained in the two Akiistic studies looking at harbour front development and downtown revitalization. Harbour Royal was given an eighteen, an initial eighteen-month contract, since renewed for an additional eighteen months, to advance the proposal in partnership with CBRM, and immediately commenced work on the first planned development phase with a focus on the library and an apartment building. HRDL and Triphus Design Consultants have prepared library planning concepts and have completed the following, all of which covers the site of the proposed library. Site surveys, Phase One and Phase Two environmental assessments, an extensive geotechnical borehole program, a traffic impact survey, a preliminary site services impact study or survey, and assembly of a 3D architectural model that has been used in early-phase consultation with respect to indigenization of the design. Significantly, this work has confirmed the environmental suitability of the CBRM lands for the construction of the library. Implicit through this process is that the library will be owned, financed, and operated by CBRM. I will now ask Spiro to speak on the recently completed TCI report, new central library options and programming review.
Thank you. As Brian mentioned, between 2016 up until last year, HRDL has been working on the preliminary planning and concept schematic design development for a new waterfront library. Several ideas have come forth from that, particularly how this building can serve as a catalyst for other projects on the site, for example, a residential apartment complex, perhaps even a commercial office tower. As we were going through the planning with HRDL, it became obvious that it's hard to advance all the pieces without knowing what the eventual footprint and parking requirements and accessibility issues associated with a critical piece of infrastructure like the library would be on the site. There was times when we were about to embark with planning for a new residential component or other commercial planning exercises on the waterfront site, but inevitably, it came back to, well, where is this building going to be finally positioned? How's it going to be accessed? How are vehicles and buses and pedestrians going to access the site? And can we really make a decision about other edifices on this very, it's a large site, but it's still limited. What are the future plans for the port? What about other partners that may want to join us? So, there was also some critical programming pieces missing from the Cape Breton Regional Library and Sydney Library itself. And we noted those to CBRM, and it was in 2020 that it was decided that we needed to firm up the service programs and operational planning guidelines for any future library, whether it be on this site or any other site. So, another study was conducted in 2020 with the firm of TCI Management Consultants. We were fortunate, once again, to be involved in this landmark study. The group comprised of Greg Young, John Linton, Beth Ross, and her husband, John, they have significant library and strategic planning experience for municipal buildings of this type. It was quite a pleasure to work with them, and Beth Ross spent an extensive amount of time, she's a career and professional librarian, working with the library staff, going through all the services and programming. And it was over the last year that we redefined and confirmed a lot of the assumptions that had been made over the last ten years. And I believe a copy of that report may have been distributed to you, but most recently, I believe, all of you heard the presentation from the senior consultant, Greg Young, via the Zoom conference call that was held in January. The summary of that report essentially reconfirmed a lot of the previous findings, but importantly, we noted that the upcoming provincial or in current provincial legislation on accessibility will have a significant impact on space requirements. To provide the same level of service, the recommended size of the new library was increased from 40,000 square feet to 45,000 square feet. And it was projected the capital cost range would be in $32 million range exclusive of the land. The facility operating costs were also projected at $330,000, which is consistent with the earlier numbers. And this represented a notional increase of $240,000 per year over the existing operating costs of the McConnell. It was clearly noted, though, that, you know, the operating costs of McConnell, particularly from a heating and energy point of view, and the type of equipment that is being used at that facility, is quite dated, and the energy consumption is quite different. I'm going to advance the next slide. This was a graphic that you have in your package, which was also featured in the report. When we think of traditional library shelving design, we think of it from our past where we had full access to upper tiers and the lower tiers, but however, now with the new legislation and this becoming a public edifice to be accessible by all users, it means we have to readapt and rethink how we provide accessibility. Inevitably, you can see that either you're going to have to drastically reduce the amount of collections that are going to be available to the public and to the users, or that we have to increase and make area allotments with the program area, and that's what was decided to do. So, the space and program summary outlined in that report to council indicated the various program and space summary elements required in a program and space summary elements required in a modern library edifice and to go forward with an overall building square footage of 45,000 square feet.
Spiro, there's 15 minutes left, just to let you know. 15 minutes left.
Thank you. So the cost considerations, they've been included in your package. Essentially, we are now currently looking at a lead contemporary building with furniture, fixtures, and fittings, looking at a construction cost of approximately $32 million. One of the recommendations in the report was that CBRM should seriously consider how we are going to incorporate and honor the Indigenous community and to really take to heart the recommendations of the Canadian Federation of Library Associations' Truth and Reconciliations Report and its recommendations. And what I wanted to do was to call to attention that report. Staff has, the library staff has seen it, the developer, HRDL, and myself as consultant, we have taken the message in that report to heart. And we would like to invite Senator Dan Christmas to the podium to talk a little bit about the inherent possibilities with considering this proposed library as a true truth and reconciliation consideration for the municipality.
Thank you very much for the kind invitation to share my perspective about the proposed new library for the Cape Breton Regional Library. Special thanks to Counselor Parsons for suggesting that I appear before you. I first became involved in the project shortly after Mr. Triffus's conceptual design about the waterfront library was first released. Chief Terry Paul from Member 2 had called me and invited me to drop by his office, and when I walked into his office, Mr. Triffus's design was spread out on his boardroom table. And he asked me what I thought it looked like. And so I took a quick look, and I remember him, I remember me telling him, it looked like a huge Mi'kmaq drum. And he laughed, he had a big smile, and he said, imagine, a big drum next to a big fiddle. So since that day, I haven't stopped thinking about the possibilities. So this morning, I'd like to share my journey with you about what the library could be. It began to dawn slowly on me that this building could be more than a library. It could be a national symbol of reconciliation between the Mi'kmaq and the residents of the Cape Breton Regional Municipality. So let me share that journey with you. My first thought was that the fiddle and the drum were symbols of our common bond of Cape Bretoners with music. It reflects truly our identity, who we are as Cape Bretoners, and who knows, you know, how many times the fiddle and the drum have brought people together. Now, if you have ever walked along the Sydney waterfront during a summer evening, you know what I mean. You know the music that's on, that's at the waterfront, you know how it brings people together with laughter, with discussion. It just has that wonderful power. And I can also tell you that I spent a lot of time at the waterfront and at the big fiddle. It is just a draw. It just brings people together, not only from our visitors, but also our local residents. The second part of my journey was I started thinking about reconciliation. It's been five years now since the release of the Truth and Reconciliation Report. My dear friend Senator Murray Sinclair, who just recently retired, was the chair. Nationally, there's been some progress on reconciliation, but I guess we can all say we still have a way to go. And I think the recent violence over the moderate livelihood fishery shows us that we, as Nova Scotians, still have a lot of work to do. I began thinking, what can we do here in Cape Breton to show that reconciliation is not just about words or platitudes? Yes, it should be about strong, lasting relationships, but are there any visible outward expressions of those inward values? Are there any monuments, special places, or buildings within the CBRM that celebrate that relationship between the Mi'kmaq and the non-Mi'kmaq? I may be mistaken, but I couldn't think of any. Former Nova Scotia Premier Stephen McNeil boldly declared a few years ago that we are all treaty people. But are there any visible signs of that unique relationship of peace and friendship that the treaties spoke about? The former city of Sydney has an unfortunate history with its Mi'kmaq neighbors. In the early 1900s, Sydney strongly advocated for the relocation and the removal of the King's Road Reserve, which is where Medical Arts Building now is located. Its former town councillor, Joseph Gillies, took the lead in prosecuting the case in federal court against our community, and he eventually won in 1916. And so in the late 1920s, the community was moved from its original home along Sydney Harbour, which we called Siboo, and we were moved to where Member 2 is now located. The loss was not just losing our homes and our property, but it was losing our centuries-old traditional connection to Sydney Harbour or Siboo. I was always grateful to former CBRM Mayor David Muse, who came to meet with the elders in Member 2 shortly after he was elected in 1998, to apologize for Sydney's role in the relocation. I clearly still remember that day. It was March 21, 1998. It was just a few months after he was elected. It was the International Day of Delamination of Racial Discrimination. And I understood that even though Mayor Muse was a lawyer, he came against the legal advice of the municipality. He came alone. He came to our community, and he apologized. And I have to say, in my time of public service, that was one of the greatest acts of political courage I have ever witnessed. Then, of course, we have the sagged legacy of Donald Marshall Jr., who was a 16-year-old in 1971, was wrongfully charged by the Sydney Police Department and convicted for a murder that he did not commit. The Royal Commission later found that racism was a factor in his wrongful conviction and imprisonment. And I remember those days in the 70s and 80s. It was a very difficult period for both Member 2 and the former city of Sydney. It was a lot of tension, was very difficult to be in that, in that community. But I'm also very grateful for former Attorney General of Nova Scotia, Senator Tom McGinnis, who also recently retired, who also came to Member 2 in 1990 and apologized to the Marshall family for the tragedy. And again, I look back at that act of political courage, to do the right thing, to come to the people and to the community who have been so wronged and offended, and to personally offer an apology. He could have did a media release, he could have did a media conference, I suppose, out of Halifax, but no, he also came right to the community, and I was in the room when he met with the family. But more recently, we've had more successes. The development of Member 2 over the past 25 years has been credited to, credited to, in part, to the cooperation and the collaboration between Member 2 and the CBRM. We have acquired lands, we have built roads, we have a new hotel, a heritage park, collaborated on a trail system, and soon, a business park. We have created new jobs, we have created new opportunities. It is said that over 1,000 people go to work each day in Member 2, and that is roughly equivalent to what the steel plant had employed before it closed in 2000. We have certainly come a long way, but we can do more. So what can we do to celebrate our relationship of peace and friendship? As I mentioned earlier, there was no, there are no monuments or buildings within the CBRM that celebrate our silent, our special relationship. It's a silence, I believe, its time has come to be broken. What if the CBRM built a library that tells Nova Scotia and did all Canadians about the special relationship between the Mi'kmaq and the non-Mi'kmaq in Cape Breton or Unamaki? What if we not only look, what if it not only looked like a Mi'kmaq drum architecturally, but what if our library also honored a lifelong CBR resident who was a nationally recognized author and poet and an Order of Canada recipient? I'm talking about Dr. Rita Jo of Escazoni, who passed away in 2007. She was a literary giant in her time, and her poetry is still widely read and published and celebrated, but there is no place to appreciate her works and contributions to Canadian literature. What if the library showcased her work? Can you imagine the visitors they would draw to CBRM, not only nationally but internationally? Can you imagine the impact they would have on our children and our residents who would read about her life and works? Can you imagine the statement it would tell Nova Scotia and all of Canada about who we are in the CBRM? I think we have an opportunity before us to build more than a library. Yes, we desperately need a library, but we can add infinitely more value to the project by making it a reconciliation project. Thank you. Malalio.
Thank you, Senator. Just to note, we are at 42 minutes, so should council appreciate a few more minutes for the presenters? We can add another 15 minutes. That would give them a full one hour to present. Is it agreed?
Yes, sir.
So I will let you know when we're at the 10 and 5-minute marks, too. So you're allowed an additional 15 minutes above the requested 45.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you for the extension, Madam Mayor. Certainly appreciate it. I'll try to speed up the order here and also try to give Kathleen some time to speak on behalf of the chamber. Where are we currently? That is the defining question. We are at a strategic and a critical point in the development of this project in terms of, we need to make and advance further design and further decisions. The schematic design has progressed to the point where we feel that we have identified the service, the programming, the operational requirements, and that we can proceed with the next phase. Excuse me, I'm just going to... I'm wondering, could staff help just, okay, there it is there. So this is the current concept plan that's been developed. There's been a lot of discussion to date in terms of how the building would be positioned on the site, how it could service the boardwalk, how it could be accessible by pedestrians, by vehicles, by bus traffic, et cetera. There are precedents for this type of architectural concept that have been investigated by the team, how it would function. You can see some images included in your package, but all these are essentially concepts at this point. We really need to advance the design in what is referred to as design development phase. We need to have a critical evaluation of the types of systems that are going to be included in this building. We've heard mention of the net zero or LEED, and what is the impact on the operating costs to a building by these types of designs? So to give you a sense, for example, critical with the next planning phase, if we look at what the typical median for energy usage is for libraries on a square meter basis, the Canadian median for energy usage is about 1.73 gigajoules. The Halifax Library, which was a LEED building, is about 1 gigajoule or $162,000 a square, 162,000 in operating costs for a building of this size. LEED gold would bring us down to 98,000. A net zero usage building would bring the operating costs down to about 30,000 a year. However, that means that we would have to have 20,000 square feet of photovoltaics on the roof. Are we going to do that, or are we not going to do that? What are the decisions that have to be advanced going forward? That's why we need to move into the next phase, which is design development. And it's a critical review, and it's a pre-design, and it's the costing, the hard costing that you are going to need to make a decision on whether this should advance any further and whether there is going to be funding available to meet the criteria. Also, we are looking at more community engagement. If we're going to proceed with doing more programming and inclusion with all communities, then there's a lot more engagement that has to be conducted. All this forms part of the design development costing exercise. So that is essentially the conclusion of our statements. I'd like to call on Kathleen to kind of wrap it up, and thank you very much for your time.
Good morning, everyone, Madam Mayor, CBRM council, staff, and guests. As mentioned, my name is Kathleen Yurcason. I'm with the chamber. I've met all of you at this point before. I know, Amanda, we're on some tight timelines, so I'll look for your cue. So I am here representing the chamber, as mentioned, but I'm also representing a number of other organizations. About three years ago, back in 2018, a group of organizations in the nonprofit and economic development spaces within our community have come together to form an ad hoc advocacy group, and those organizations include, of course, the Chamber of Commerce, but the Cape Breton Partnership, SDDA, Sydney Downtown Development Association, Michelle Wilson is here with me today, the Municipality of Victoria County, being the central library for CBRM Victoria, the YMCA of Cape Breton, the Port of Sydney, Undercurrent Youth, the Boys and Girls Club, and the Boys and Girls Club of Cape Breton, which is also known as the Whitney Peer Youth Club. So we came together all as community-centered, focused organizations that have a pretty large engaged stakeholder group amongst all of us, but we also came together because we all believe that our community deserves and needs a new central public library in our downtown core. We also believe that now is the absolute right time to realize this, this vision. Over the past three years, we've been quite engaged on this, on this file. We've been continuously engaged with government and funding partners discussing this project in length. We visited the Truro and Halifax libraries back in 2018 to understand their quest and realization of their central libraries in our province. There's also other examples throughout our province as well. We hosted two public meetings in 2018 and 2019, and we presented before council, previous council, on this topic three times. So in the essence of time, I have a few notes, but I just want to go through them quite quickly, but I guess the reason why we felt that it would be important for our group to be represented just quickly today as this project is presented to all of you in length is because it is a bold vision. The waterfront development at large is a bold vision for our community. The waterfront development at large is a bold vision for our community, and the library is a large investment for our municipality. And there's been this looming question for the past three or more decade years of, you know, can we afford this? And as the Chamber of Commerce and as a representative of all these advocacy groups, it really begs the question, can we afford not to do this? And I'm just going to spend a few moments just, just contextualizing what the impact of a piece of public infrastructure of this nature can do for our community and has exemplified in other communities across our province and our country and even the world. I would be remiss not to say that we are in an unprecedented time, as we all know. And timing is truly everything with projects like this, whether we are coming out of a post-pandemic and entering into recovery, or if we look to previous shifting times in our world and in our, and in our province. And right now, government is spending money. They're investing in economies and in growth and in recovery all across our country. And I personally believe, and on behalf of the chamber and all these organizations, that why, you know, why not us? We have to be bold in our quest to secure some of this money. As mentioned by Bill Murphy's issue paper, with the application that you approved to motion to put forward that questionnaire, the government plans on investing, our federal government plans on investing $1.5 billion in green and inclusive infrastructure for projects exactly like the library. They're looking to do that for shovel-ready projects across our country. It's an incredible opportunity, but it's also an incredibly competitive playing field. We're competing against the rest of the country, essentially, who has the most compelling project that has the most economic opportunity for the region. And rural Canada is highlighted in that. I mean, we are, have an opportunity to really showcase what we want to do here, what is possible here, what is already happening here. And we know there's lots happening here right now, which is pretty incredible. So it's, it's an issue of, you know, I think that we already have a shovel-worthy project as Minister McKenna contextualized last year. You saw in your package my letter that I had sent to her that both MP Batiste and MP Kellyway undersigned with me in response to her interview with the National Observer. And she talked about shovel-worthy projects. So as Spiro just mentioned in design development, it's, I think, now incumbent upon us as a community to get this project to shovel-ready. So we are prepared to go into an application phase with this project. When we think about public sector investment and how it pertains to economic development and economic spinoff, two things that we feel incredibly strongly about here in Cape Breton, and it's incredibly important as we realize our potential and understand what is possible here and see what is possible here, we can look to pieces of infrastructure that, you know, we might sometimes become complacent about, being the very building that we're standing in here right now, what Centre 200 has done for our entire community over the past number of decades. Or you look down to the Joan Harris Cruise Pavilion and what has been possible with cruise and tourism and what has been, that, what that has been able to generate in terms of economic development and economic spinoff for our entire island. But then you look to most recent examples, NSCC. They announced their relocation officially in 2018, and we've already seen significant private investment happen in our community because of that. That building is three years at least out from opening up its doors, maybe longer, depending. But we are already seeing significant private investment. Brian Lund, developing two developments just outside our downtown core right now between, that is going to have a tax revenue spinoff of 160 to $200,000 a year in tax revenue. That's $1 million in tax revenue alone from the private sector in the next five years. Dora's development down on Dodd Street, three blocks away from the waterfront, two $12 million buildings. That's $12 million in construction cost. Not, we don't know the assessed value of those buildings yet, but let's just assume it's $12 million for numbers' sake. That's more than combined for those two buildings, more than $600,000 in tax, annual tax revenue a year, multi-millions of dollars in five years, in the next five years. And then there's the residential development, as you see every day, going into the civic centre on the Esplanade across from the civic centre. So furthermore, and Michelle can speak greatly to this, but there's several buildings that have turned over in our downtown core and in the process of seeing significant investment and improvement over the next three years. That, that investment is happening right now. We've also seen several new restaurants and retail stores open up or relocate to our downtown in the most recent of years as well. This is all economic development, and it's not by coincidence. In speaking with Dora, in speaking with Brian Lund, in speaking.
Five minutes.
Okay. In speaking with the resident, or with the commercial landowners, why are they investing? Why are they building that in, in ways that we've never seen before, especially in the residential space? It's because the, when the public center, sector shows up with investment, it builds confidence for the private sector. It's really, it really is that simple. And we know that the waterfront development around this library holds significant promise for, to continue to increase our tax base, which only makes us a more wealthier municipality and enable us to further develop and invest, and attract investment. The library is a catalyst for this, for this project. I mean, I think that, that has been clearly depicted. And just quickly, when it comes to the way that, because I'm strict for, stuck for time, the way that libraries intersect with investment attraction and, more importantly, talent attraction. In just a conversation with Bob Pelley yesterday, I don't know if you know Bob Pelley, he's the executive director of Inova Corp. We met yesterday about their switch to biotech as, and not just the tech sector. There are nine companies even, either here already or coming here in the next, in the past six months and the next six months. They are expected to be, bring 64 employees over the next, between now and the end of the year. There's another six of those in the hopper. Combined, they have a total valuation of $100 million. These companies are coming from all over the world. They are looking to employ very high-paying jobs, very highly educated jobs. And all those people are, will be bringing their families. We need to have a vibrant community to allow these companies to attract talent. We need to have vibrant communities and a community that they want to live in and that these companies, once, once they determine what their exact product is as they work through with Inova Corp and the Vershoren Centre, I know Beth Mason was before council a couple of weeks ago, they could set up shop here, but we need a community that they want to live in. I presented to you folks at the lakes a couple of weeks ago, and it really comes down to, you build a place where people want to live, you'll build a place where people want to visit, and you'll build a place where business needs to be. And it's that cyclical effect. So this investment is so much more, so much more than, than just the library, that we need the library. I think that has been so clear, and I know Lisa's in the room and she's able to answer questions, but it's so much bigger than that. I wish I had more time. I actually had the opportunity to speak to a number of different people in economic development with the town of Turo and, and their partnership. And I have an email that I can certainly circulate afterwards about the impact of their library that, that they have seen over the past number of years. But overall, they've seen more than $21 million worth of investment around their library in the past four years. They've seen, they're building, in the process of building, 1,200 residential units in and around the civic centre, the civic square and their library right now. They've seen more building permits in the past three years than ever in the history of their town. Turo, the city centre of Turo is 12,000 people. The entire Colchester, Turo County or East Hands County, West Hands County, sorry, forgive me, is around 60,000. So they're smaller than us in, in a lot of ways. And in speaking with Alison Grant, their manager of economic development, in asking her explicitly, you know, what has, how has this changed your community? And she said, it's quite simple. It's transformed it. It's built confidence. It's built a sense of vibrancy. It's built walkability. It's leveraged private investment in ways that they've never could have imagined. And they said they really just took the risk. Anyway, I'll leave it at that, because I know I have limited time, but happy to take any more questions. I've had other things that I want to mention, but hopefully that gave you an understanding of what this could truly mean to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen, and thank you to the presenters today. That is our time now.
Point of privilege, Mayor McDougall.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Everyone is talking about how much time we have and whether we're going to be in time or out of time. Does everyone have an appointment at 11:30? I wasn't invited to.
No, we're strictly going on the request for presentations.
Terrific.
And trying to keep things, you know, we've been talking about meeting structure and what have you.
Yes.
So 45 minutes was allocated. We allowed an additional 15. Mr. Shabid.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I could ask you for a minute or maybe two at the most.
Max is two.
Some closing remarks and we'll open this for questions and answers. Thank you, Kathleen. It was a wonderful presentation. Obviously, a lot of, a lot of enthusiasm, which we need, and she's exemplifies that in spades. Some closing remarks. CBRM and HRDL continue to be aligned on the key objective, which is where we started, how to best develop the waterfront lines in the context of the strategic revitalization of downtown. HRDL continues to be motivated, having made a significant investment to date. Now more than ever, the library should be supported into the next phase. Important pieces of technical work have been completed. The concept has evolved. The opportunity to undertake the work with First Nations as a reconciliation project is now understood and represents a huge opportunity. The funders are at the table and paying attention and now want to see the project better defined. Infrastructure money is going to be spent on projects properly positioned in the queue, and we should be in the queue. Finally, the timing seems right. Design development is the next key step. Important decisions will be made. What exactly, where exactly will the building sit on the site? What exactly will be the final building aesthetics? How will the building be accessed by vehicle and pedestrian traffic? And how will this disconnect to the rest of the site? Where exactly will the parking be located? On and on. As these decisions take shape, HRDL will be able to optimize the apartment location and integrate it into the plan. We will also be able to engage others on developments for Phase Two. We will be, we will be well-advanced and ready to go. So thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for listening to our presentation. And the floor is open now for questions, and we'll try to provide answers. And our, my colleagues will be available to dissipate in that as you wish. So, thank you, Madam.
Thank you. So I forgot to mention, prior to the presentation, that invitations were also sent out to our provincial and federal colleagues, all of whom were already obliged to either the legislature or other political business. So regrets were sent from our municipal and federal colleagues. It was MP Mike Kellyway who did send an email back to me stating, "Infrastructure Canada Fund really would be the route to take in terms of getting funding for this project." Again, I, I said it before, the process for that funding is for the municipality to identify the project as a priority, then send it off to the province, the province sends it off to the federal government. I think I've got that right, correct. So we now have time for discussion, and I will look to my colleagues whether or not we want to stick to our typical five and two format, or we can relax the rules of the, of our session here today and just go back and forth. We can take five minutes each, keep going back and forth, similar to what we did with our meeting yesterday. Would you like to relax the rules a little bit and allow for more flow of conversation? Counselor?
Madam Mayor, if I can make a suggestion, if we do decide to relax the rules, perhaps we can do what we've done in the past, which is limit it to two minutes so that it's not 5-5-5.
Sure.
But two minutes, and you can come back as often as required to have the discussion.
Great. How does counsel feel about that? Do you agree?
Sure.
Agreed. Okay, so we will, oh, Counselor Eldon McDonald.
Thanks, thanks very much, Madam Mayor. I do have a statement that I do want to make. It will take longer than two minutes. So if I would be allowed that time, it would be appreciated. I don't mind going back and forth.
Sure.
Maybe if we could go five.
Sure.
It's up to counsel.
Yep. No, we just agreed to two minutes, so we can, we'll just work through it, Counselor. Okay, so discussion. I will do my very best to keep track of the, the queue, so hands in the air. We'll start with Counselor Steve Gillespie, followed by Deputy Mayor Earlene McMullin.
Thank you, Mayor McDougall, and thank you very much for the presentations. One of the, one of the issues that, that I find that I'm in here is, when we talk about a regional library and we talk about Harbour Royal development, I have to try to understand where we are as a group. Realistically, when the RFP was put out, it was for the development of the harbour property. It was not for a library. The, one development came back, and it was Harbour Royal, and they included a library in their development, which was great. And I'm, I'm glad they did because I thought the, the presentation was fantastic and I thought the concept was great as well. But this is two, has to be two separate conversations. Do we need new library? Yes. I don't think there's anybody that disagrees with that in this room. Where the library goes or whether it's included in a development, that is, I think, a separate conversation, but that's the way I, I see it. The other issue that I have with this is the money. As Jerry Maguire said, "Show me the money." The provincial government has indicated on several occasions that their priorities for Nova Scotia were healthcare and education. And we can see that in what has been happening in healthcare in this area. Unless the political will is there from the province, we can continue these meetings. But unless we have them here at the table, unless they say to us, yes, this is how much money we have, I, I'm wondering where we can go from here. Because not only do they control their share, they decide what the priority is for them to pass on to the province.
Thank you. That's two minutes. Deputy Mayor Earlene McMullin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just, it's kind of along the lines of my colleague, but like you mentioned, in 2017, we put out the expression of interest to develop the municipal land. We got a great update on where we are with the library portion, but just a reminder that that award was for a mixed-use area, for residential, commercial building, the library, I believe, the casino, an expansion of the hotel, parking, other different. So can I get an update perhaps, because we're going to be three-year mark in June, is, can I get an update possibly on the project outside of just the library component? Because that's our facility in our building, so I really would like to see where the project is outside of that, because that's a big ask and a big thing, you know? Like, it's quite expensive and no one, you know, you, if you can afford to buy a horse, that's great, but if you can't feed it, it's going to die, so that lies on our shoulders. So I just need to see how solid everything else is around it. So if somebody could update me on the, like, the surrounding project, that would be fantastic.
Thank you for the question, thank you for the question, Earlene. This project, as you all could see from the design and development concept, is an integrated project. The library, the first phase of this project was the library, a proposed apartment building and an office tower. And these three, three edifices or buildings were integrated on the site as laid out and designed by, by Spiro Triphus. We have been, been advancing the, the design of the apartment building in keeping with, in parallel with the work that's been done on the library. And we've looked at several options to, to build an apartment building on that site, but we keep running up against what is happening with the rest of the site. How will the location of the, of the library impact the apartment building, for instance? How are we going to integrate and connect the various site services, access, well, pedestrian access, vehicle access? Even, even the appearance of, of an apartment building or the, the edifice, sorry, the exterior design of an apartment building has to take account of, of what the library will look like. These all are interconnected features of, of the site and of the development, and we've, we've progressed with the apartment building is quite far, quite frankly, and spent quite a bit of money on various options. But we feel compelled to, to hold up until we know exactly what's going on with this, with this, with this library. And the next step for, for the library is to do the design development, establish a Class C cost, establish a funding formula with the federal government, and see if this municipality can. can afford their share of that project. Hopefully, the formula will change. At one time, it was one-third, one-third, one-third. More lately, we hear about 27%, 40%, and one-third. And now, with all this stimulus money that's being spent because of COVID and our economy, who knows what the new formula will be? And with the introduction of the First Nations element to this project, I think the funders will look very favorably on this project because of its recognition of the truth and reconciliation requirements that we should be paying more than just lip service to. Is that adequate?
Madam Mayor, I don't know my time.
Your time's up, yeah.
Okay, I'll come back.
Yeah. Next, we have Counselor Sorel McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for the presentation to you and your entire team, Mr. Shabib. Question, something you just said, so I'll just make it public. I support a new library. I think we need a new library. So if this question comes off as, "I don't support it," that's incorrect. So, our $34 million investment is contingent on the rest of your development. Is that what I just heard?
No, it's not.
Okay. So that, but that's how I interpreted what you just said. So if we choose not to proceed with a new library in this current location, the rest of your development is not happening?
No, no, that's not correct.
Okay, can you clarify that for me?
Well, what I said or meant to say was that the design of the library and the associated, and the connecting buildings was an integrated design. If there is no library, we will want to reimagine the site, reconfigure how those buildings will be located there, whether there'll be more than one apartment building. It'll free up a whole lot of the site if there's no apartment, if there's no library. So, yeah, we will want to reimagine that development, different than what we've got now, because the centerpiece of our development was a library integrated with the rest of the site opportunities. So, I don't, does that clarify for you?
Yeah, no, that's perfect. Thank you. I'll come back for more.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, but I believe he just clarified, but just for a little further, so the development could still go ahead if the funding doesn't, if the partners aren't all at the table, or it just will look different.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
This collection of land that the municipality has put together and added to the HRDL land is a coveted piece of waterfront property, and it's open for, wide open for development. We have the development option through our response to the RFP, and we've based it and centered it around the library. But if that's not there, then we'll go back and start all over again.
So, Madam Mayor, if I could for clarity, perhaps, to the CAO, or if the funding doesn't appear, because right now, from what I've seen today, the only funding partner at the table currently is us, and we don't even come close to one-third, let alone 27%. So, this is my reason for these questions. But if we don't get the funding for the library, and again, I'm in full favor of a new library, we definitely need it, hands down, for all the reasons that were described today. So, but if we can't, what does that mean for the current expression of interest? Because we own the portion of land that the library is slated to go on. So what would happen to the entire project then? Would it be a retendering? Do we just hand over that? Like, I don't know what would happen there. If you could clarify that as well, that would be great.
Yeah, I'll try to comment on that, and the solicitor's here if he wants to add. I believe the development agreement is finished at the end of June. If there is no development by that time, I mean, personally, I think we would put it out to another RFP for development. It is a prime piece of land, as Mr. Shabib has said, and we still want to see that piece of land. If it's not a library, then we want something on the waterfront for development, for sure. So I would, it would be a decision of counsel, but I would guess that, I would recommend that it be put out to an RFP.
Thank you. Counselor Steve Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll weigh in on, first of all, thank you for the presenters. Senator Christmas, welcome. I may think a little bit different. We're asking ourselves, "What if the province is not on board? What if we don't get this funding?" We don't know unless we ask, and if we can't ask by doing our due diligence to get to the point of putting an application together, be it Class B estimates or Class C estimates, knowing exactly what the ask is, we're sitting around talking about what-ifs. I'm more optimistic. I think the timing is right, and I say it for several reasons. We have a new premier. The old premier publicly didn't support the library. How do we know if the new premier does? We haven't asked him yet. We've got the land. If we have the borrowing capacity, rates have never been so low on borrowing money. Truth and reconciliation is out and about. Projects are being, even in Esqusoni today, our long-term care facility is a truth and reconciliation reflection of an ask. Unless we ask those pertinent questions to the federal government, if we're in, if we're in for our share, and the federal government is in, that will put pressure on the province to be in. This is a project that's growth for all stages and all areas of economic development. Marconi is going downtown as we speak, another educational facility. As a former educator, I certainly believe in the library. I will be supporting a library, and it's all about priorities. Construction, jobs, people moving in the area, all these are about economic development. Yesterday, we went through, looking forward in terms of economic development, what our plan is. We're looking at our municipal governing act. We're looking at our bylaws. All this works in tandem with economic development, and so does projects such as this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Darren Brochwager.
Thank you, Mayor, and I also want to thank all the presenters for their presentation and the passion that they put into this. And, believe me, as a counselor, there's nothing I'd like to see more than development in our communities. We've led that charge for quite some time now with the, I think, of the second berth and the continuation of the boardwalk, and all the things that we are trying to do to make the community as vibrant as possible. I guess for me, it's all about money, and that's my concern. Like, personally now, and I've heard the possibility of $1,000 a square foot, and I don't know where that all fits, and even with the price of materials today compared to where they were just a year and a half ago. I don't know what this is going to come in at. But let's say it is 40 million bucks, and our best-case scenario is a 27% funding formula, as we got in the past. We're still into $11 million plus, okay? Probably up to 12 million bucks. So I guess for me, that's where it's at right now. We have so much money that we committed to the project. And there was a question from Counselor Parsons earlier to Jennifer. Yes, we can go up higher than the 3 million, up to seven, but that means you're taking it from something else that's planned, that we laid out a five-year capital plan. Where are we taking that from? So I guess, where is the money? Have we found any other partners to help the CBRM? I brought up about fundraising efforts. Where is the other partners that we spoke of? Is there any other money that is on our side? Has it been put forward to you, Marie, to date? Has anybody said they were on board to help the CBRM side of these dollars?
I can speak to that if you would like, Counselor.
Please.
I know myself and the CAO, Deputy CAO as well, as per direction of counsel, did have an opportunity to sit down with our provincial and federal counterparts to talk about projects, the library and other such priorities that we've deemed. And no, the short answer right now is, no, there is no funding. What we did hear, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Madam CAO, what we did hear was, you need to prioritize what projects you're going forward with. So I think the motion this morning of the three projects that are being advanced to the survey from the federal government very clearly identify some of the major projects that we do want to work on. In my eyes, at this point, the only thing we can do is wait to hear back and see if those priorities actually fit within any funding envelopes. Again, my personal experience is, from previous counsel, you cannot create a funding envelope out of nowhere, especially if there's no political will.
Sure.
So we're at the point that, as Deputy Mayor Earlene McMullin stated, we are the only committed funding partners. Madam CAO?
And if I could, just to that, Madam Mayor, because I was even thinking, okay, I'll come back. That's fine.
So I did have a conversation with the province in terms of at least funding the design. So I was put off to another department and waiting for a call back, which was supposed to come last week, and I have not yet received that. I talked to MP Kellaway. He had given me some advice on where to go provincially to look for funding, so am still waiting to hear back from those parties.
Thank you, Counselor. I can put you back on the list for another.
Please, thank you.
Yes. Counselor Gordon McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I too would like to thank the presenters and also to welcome Dan Christmas here, Senator Dan Christmas here, and the fact that the reconciliation idea is an absolutely wonderful concept to be able to put into a library environment. Just a couple of questions, Mayor. Like, the land cost, I believe, was calculated several years back, and has that been an appraised cost? And what would the value of that piece of property be in 2021 market, with the value of properties hitting roof levels? You know, and you talk about, because throughout this whole development and through all the information that has been put forward to councils and sent toward us, because the proposal that was initially put out was to develop the waterfront to, it was to develop the waterfront and pick a proposal that would demonstrate the greatest potential benefit for the CBRM in terms of job creation and property tax revenues. And that was passed by council in September 19th of 2017 at the General Committee meeting, and also on September 19th, 2017, at the council meeting, at the 25th, September 25th, I mean. So I'm kind of curious, like, is this development fitting all the criteria that was previously discussed at council prior to? Because nowhere else, until February 6th of 2018, when the Harbour Royal Development Group made a presentation, the council was the waterfront library development specifically entrenched in being at the waterfront. So I'm kind of curious, has there been any other costs around having the library developed and built in a different location? Or like, is the waterfront development project, are the costs down at the waterfront substantially more than developing, is it, say, tearing down the McConnell and building a new McConnell Library up in that site? So I'm kind of curious where that's at.
That's fine.
And has anybody?
Sorry.
Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Murphy, or Director Murphy, would you be able to comment to the?
No, I would not.
No? Okay.
I have no information.
So I guess there was a couple of questions there. On the value of the land, we've had some recent appraisals of land that is around the waterfront, which would be in close proximity. We don't have an appraisal of that actual piece, but the most current appraisal was a per-acre cost, which would actually put our piece around 2.4 million, so under the 3 million. In terms of the cost, and Director McDonald can comment, but I believe from the last report on the waterfront, because of sea level rise, and it would be around $3 million more to put it on the waterfront.
Thank you.
Counselor Darren Brochwager, followed by Deputy Mayor Earlene McMullin.
Thanks, Mayor. So I guess my point was, I was kind of taking it for granted that the provincial share would be there and the federal, but what I was talking about was even our 27%, which is a huge amount for us as a municipality. And we talked about fundraising efforts as a possibility to help that fund of our share, maybe Member Two, Victoria County, CBU. We talked about partners that could help this municipality. Have we heard anything from any of those groups to date, Marie? Because I know there were some questions, or they were asked. And finally, before I go, through you, Madam Mayor, maybe if I could, with Senator Christmas, with the truth and reconciliation, is there a fund there that could possibly help the municipality on our side as well? Because I think that's just a great idea, and I'm wondering if the senator has a fund that he could help CBRM out with on our side of the funding. Just if I could stop, I know my time is short, so I'll leave those questions, maybe with, Marie to start.
So we did meet with Chief Paul in terms of funding possibilities. Because they would not own, we would own the project, they do not have access to capital funding. I'd leave it to Senator Christmas on funding around truth and reconciliation. I did question ACOA at one point. I talked to somebody at ACOA and asked if there were any funding opportunities for the truth and reconciliation. At that time, there were not for the library. I don't know if anything in that avenue has changed, but Senator Christmas may have a
Thank you, Counselor, for the question. I want to come back up, because I forgot my coffee. Short answer is, I'm not aware of any particular, specific funds for reconciliation projects. It's not to say that they are not. Usually, a division between senators and MPs, MPs usually look after the funding, and we, as senators, we deal more with legislation. So I would check with my colleagues to see if they can identify any specific funding. But I think, I hope this is not taken in the wrong way, but I think that if you're going to do a reconciliation project, that it really needs to be done with the full cost of partners. So it seems a little funny that if we do a reconciliation project, then the MiG Ba got to pay a part of it. Okay. That seems a little odd, but it's not to say it can't be done, but I would say if it's true reconciliation, then our partners should be in, you know, both feet first. So I say that with all respect, and I hope it's not taken the wrong way.
Thank you, Senator.
I'll come back again, please.
Sure. Deputy Mayor Earlene McMullin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to touch on, now, I know this question, but just trying to get money. I realize that the next phase would be the design development, which was mentioned. I do understand that it's hard to pinpoint a price, because it would have to go to tender, but do we have an estimate of what that design would cost if we had to foot the bill ourselves?
I think Wayne.
Wayne, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor. I believe in the, in your documents, there's detail that was put forward by the Harbour Royal Developments folks with an estimate of preliminary costs associated with design development. That's on page 21, in the background information, at 1.5 million. I'm sure that number's based on a factor associated with a cost that was originally developed. There's no question that in the documents that I put, that are on page 18, talking about the project development for each of the three projects that we would be putting forward in the questionnaire, that there's certainly initial phase of work required for a project like this. I may be wording it differently, however, in the document that I put forward to council on page 18, an enhanced pre-design phase would take into context current site requirements, options, building and site size confirmation, opportunities for programming synergies within the downtown public spaces, fundraising campaign, Class C cost estimates, project delivery model, project timelines, and anticipated cash flow. Typically, they are in the 2% to 3% of your detailed design. They could be a little higher, depending on how much you put forward in a complex type of project like this. And that would form portions of your design fund that would be in the next phase, your full design.
Madam Mayor, through you to our CFO.
Your time, sorry. I could put you back on the list, sir, Deputy Mayor.
Please.
Next, Counselor Darren Brochwager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I guess just back to the senator, and I know I didn't mean anything disrespectful, for sure, but as Senator Dan knows, and he's on record, that Cape Pen, we should separate from the province. We have a bad funding formula here, which causes us to be in these situations where we can't supply the stuff that's needed, and that's the sorry truth of it. You know, when you talk about HRM, you know, and the nice library, we know that they have at least reported $300 million in reserves that they can draw from any different account at any time, where we had to use our little bit of reserve money to balance our budget last year. So that was why I'm looking for other options for us, so that we could achieve such a project. We need partners in a different kind of way, and that's why I reached out. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Back to Deputy Mayor Earlene McMullin. Thank you, councillor. Back to Deputy Mayor Erle McMullin, and then councillor Steve Gillespie to follow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just a follow-up, through you to Jennifer, perhaps, or Marie, to put forward, if there is no funding for that development, thank you, design development, if there's no funding, that 1.5 million, would that potentially have to come out of our contribution to the capital development? Like, how, or do we have to find that somewhere? How does that work?
That would come out of our, I would think, our contribution. That would be our contribution to the project, a part of our contribution. That's how I would see it. I guess it depends on the funds, where it comes from. Wayne, would that qualify as a contribution?
I think the fundamental of part of our meeting today is because we don't have a fund in front of us. If we had a fund, almost, I don't know if there's any funds that cost share 67% or 75% of a project, where we've said no in the past. Very seldom do we ever say no to those things. That's the difficulty. But certainly, to Marie's point, those dollars today come out of our capital budget. As we were in council very recently, we're short by, I believe, $4 million in our capital budget currently for this year. I think the important point is to determine who the funding partners are and how much money they're willing to put forward.
Thank you.
If I may, Madam Chair, on the clarity on the question asked?
Go ahead.
The 1.5 million is a total cost to development design. That's one-third for CBRM, not total 1.5, correct?
If there is other funding coming forward. And I've been meeting with MP Callaway, and I've had calls into the province and waiting calls. So, we don't have confirmation of funding from any other partners for the design, as of yet.
If these partners are willing, they would share in that cost. So, it wouldn't be a $1.5 million cost to CBRM, correct?
That's the hope.
Thank you.
Councillor Gillespie?
Thank you, Mayor McDougall. Question I have is just with regards to the funding and the partners. And I know that there is several groups out there that have wanted or have a desire to be a part of, let's call it, the Friends of Library or the New Build. And there is a definite desire of individuals who want to be a part of that. And I know fundraising in this area is difficult, but it can be done. Not to be funny, but every time I turn on the television, I'm faced with Mr. Shabib and his lovely wife with regards to funding for our hospice, and I'm glad that that's happening as well. So, I know that the opportunity is there, and that there are funding, there are individuals who want to be a part of this. I remember when the YMCA was going to be built, money started coming in, because they had a real focused plan on how they were going to raise money. And I strongly believe that this community and the individuals who want this library will want to be a part of that. So, I think that that would help. The other issue is, a letter was sent to our First Nations communities, and a letter was received back stating that because our First Nations communities did not own the library, that they could not be a funding partner. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And those letters can all be accessed in the study that was completed, the operational study. So, they're all in the appendices of that report as well. Next, councillor Eldon McDonald.
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. And just to go back, and I guess a couple of comments that I'll try to add some clarity or add some comments to. In regards to the meeting with the funding partners that we had, and Mayor, you referenced it, the clear direction from my perspective on that particular meeting with the two senior levels of government, the federal government seemed to be very much in favor of working with us and moving the project forward to see if there is funding available through different sources and to go in that direction. Provincial government needed clarity on that it was a waterfront development for the library, for the location, which is why I came back with the motion back when it was taken off the agenda. So, that motion was to bring clarity on behalf of the provincial government, that it was, in fact, the waterfront library that we were talking about. And once they had that clarity, we were then going to reconvene to have another funding meeting of the same people to see where we could do in moving those things forward. Also, and I would stand to be corrected, Wayne maybe could mention this, or maybe one of the presenters, the 32 million that's in this TCI report, using that as the baseline for the costs, the 1.5 for design development, I believe, would be part of those costs. So, going on councillor Parsons' comments, if it was a third, a third, and a third, it'd be $500,000 each, but that would actually be coming out of the 32 million. So, it wouldn't be 32 million plus 1.5, putting it at 33.5. So, just for clarity there. Thank you. Unless I'm wrong, someone can correct me. So, thank you.
Councillor James Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Really enjoying the debate and the discussion here. I want to thank our presenters and Senator Christmas for your appearance. You know, many of the questions that I had pertaining to this subject have already been asked and answered in this, but I wanted to remind my fellow councillors of the, of our vision that we defined in our strategic planning sessions about our healthy and community, and their cultural and prosperous community, and just to be more community oriented, to have the individuals and the partners that we have involved here. I think where we are now is whether or not we're going to go to the next level as far as the design stage. Is that correct? So, I think that, and then Mr. Shabib noted that if in the design stage that we find that we can't go forward or whatever, then we can still withdraw, or we're not bound to that. So, I think for, as far as our presentation here today is concerned, I think it's incumbent on council to at least go to the next phase in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any further comments, questions? Councillor Eldon McDonald?
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. And first, let me apologize. My intent was to actually start speaking by thanking everyone of our presenters and thanking Senator Christmas. And unfortunately, I forgot to do that. So, apologies for that, but I do want to thank everyone for their time and commitment that's been here today. It's been a good discussion. So, if I could, I do have a little bit of information I would like to share, and if my two minutes is up and there's others wish to speak, I'm fine with that. A new central library has been a community focus for more than a decade. As evidenced by the recent Stats Canada survey, our regional library network factors predominantly into the lives of residents as a defining community asset in innovative and creative ways. The federal government has indicated projects will be vetted through the lens of a social deterrence that include a desire for a cleaner and more inclusive future, and the need to get value from money through leveraging public investment, criteria that would not just focus on shovel readiness, but also shovel worthiness, location, and accessibility. Halifax's new library, excuse me, Halifax's new library has seen dramatic increase in visits in its first year of operation. Foot traffic has gone from approximately 1.5 million to over 6 million increased foot traffic on Spring Garden Road. Truro transformed their downtown core as a result from the investment in their new library, recognized in 2017 by the Canadian Institute of Planters as the second-best downtown revitalization project in Canada. Research confirms impact of libraries produce a 3% to 6% return on investment. The economic benefits of the community are substantial. A new central library will build on the momentum we currently see and feel in our community. For years, we talk about the lack of jobs for our young people, residents, who are living here and having to leave. People have left and gone across this country to look for employment. We must not lose sight that the project could create up to 250 to 300 full-time equivalent jobs.
That's time. We have another speaker, so he can come back to you, councillor McDonald. Councillor Glenn Perush?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'd just like to thank all the presenters today for taking the time to bring us all up to speed, especially some of us newer councillors that weren't really in the mix, 2012 and on. And I just wanted to touch on some of the things that were said, like, a library is a destination. It will definitely attract foot traffic. It can be an anchor for the downtown. Public libraries do contribute to the safety and the quality of life, which is something that we spoke about in our strategic sessions. But I also just wanted to put out there that maybe I do sit on the library board, and maybe just so that the people within the CBRM know that we're serious about the library, maybe it is time for us as the library board to up the fundraising. I know Mr. Gillespie mentioned it, and to date, we really haven't. And I know with the Horizon Achievement Centre, they raised $1.5 million, which proved to everybody within the city that this is something that we want to do. So, I think going forward, this is one step to prove, to solidify that if this is the direction that council wants to go, we got to put our money where our mouth is. Thank you.
Councillor Eldon McDonald?
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. If I could start where I ended, this project could create upwards of 250 to 300 full-time equivalent jobs and $10 to $12 million in new household income locally. The 2011 McConnell feasibility study reviewed a retrofitted facility. The study concluded that the building would continue to be inadequate and impractical to pursue at $18 million. The conclusion is now, sorry, the, pardon me, studies are now a decade old. The building has further deteriorated over the years with leaking windows upstairs, leaking windows downstairs, plumbing that's backing up in the main floor of the library, dripping down through the ceiling onto desks of working employees in the bottom floor of our current library. Another study in 2016 confirmed the same results, that the best option is to build a new library, and that should be pursued. Public consultation for 2016 study included stakeholders workshops that considered services in modern libraries and solicited feedback on community expectations and preferences for the new central library. There was also public sessions in 2018 and 2019, as indicated from Kathleen here today. The most recent study presented in 2021 by TCI consultants was the Service Program Operational Report. Their team of experts provided details of experience with community analysis, need assessments, library service plans, library technology, library programs for comparable communities and projects to CBRM. The findings were the same as the previous studies. The findings were the same as the previous studies. CBRM needed to build a new library. Just the same as we rely on CBRM staff to provide us good advice on projects, we need to take serious the advice of every consulting firm that has provided expert advice. They can't all have this wrong. Retired librarian Fay McDougall presented to council and advised the McConnell Library is the largest branch and serves as the central library in the region system. The building houses regional library headquarters, where all materials are ordered, processed, and routed to all 12 libraries and serviced throughout the CBRM in Victoria County.
That's time.
Thank you.
Councillor Glenn Perush?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one thing that I wanted to mention. In all these talks that we've had here today, there hasn't been any mention of Portside that's down there that employs 55 people. Is there any, if all these things do come to fruition, is there any, is there any talks of where that building could be moved? Because I know it was built on the principle that with future developments, where that could go in relation to the 55 people that are currently employed there?
It is part of the lease, that if the development takes place, that it has to be moved. We have not had discussions with the owner on where that would be. That would be a decision of his, but no, there has been no discussions on that.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Eldon McDonald?
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. High levels of heat in the summer have negative impacts in our central library due to necessary closures, 12 times last year exceeding 38 degrees. Recent measures have been taken to install to help with this issue, but unfortunately, the headquarters cannot benefit from the changes, and the closures affect all 12 libraries. Headquarters alone employs 17 staff that work daily for all 12 libraries and are crammed into 8,500 square feet and will require a large addition of space with the new accessibility legislation. A proposal was submitted by HRDL Partners and was reviewed by staff. Motion of council was approved to have HRDL proceed. HDRL provided CBRM with the proposal, which envisioned and included in their regional library waterfront plans. Council accepted the pre-development agreement by motion on June 5th of 2018, so that HRDL could proceed with the project development work and bring back a full proposal to council for approval. We have the letters of support from the provincial minister, Glavine, to continue our work on this important initiative that recognizes the important role of libraries playing in building in strong communities. We also have here today Senator Dan Christmas acknowledging that First Nations with Member Two and Eskazoni would be a prominent figure on our waterfront and what that brings to our community. We also have support from our MPs. New opportunities to pursue, a $1.5 billion federal fund recently announced in regards to the application we're talking about earlier today. This will be for buildings under the new green and inclusive community building program. The program will be managed by the federal government outside the traditional liberal, sorry, bilateral agreements with the province. Experience in other communities?
Time.
Okay.
Councillor Lauren Green?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too want to thank the presenters and Senator Christmas for being here this morning. I felt it encompassed upon me to speak, because I was the mover to bring this forward to council. I guess I have a few questions in regards to the actual go-forward plan from here. My understanding is that HDRL agreement expires by June of this year, so obviously, there's time-sensitive issues that have to be addressed. We mentioned the design concept costing $1.5 million. My understanding is it's tied specifically to this site, so the design concept, if we decide to proceed with that, we would be tied to this site. And at this point, I don't know that I'm comfortable particularly tied to this particular site. I don't know if it was explored other places for our library. And I want to go on record that I do support a new library. I've had the opportunity to visit the current library, and the conditions there are, I don't even know how to describe the conditions there, because it's the same pretty much when I was going to high school, with, you know, the exceptions of a couple of rooms or additions that haven't been there when I was going to high school. So, I am on record of supporting the library. I'd like to say, I just don't understand the design concept if we proceed. My understanding is we're anchored to that. We've sent off to the federal government the applications in terms of getting in the queue, at least, or having a look at the potential for funding through the federal government. So, until those things happen, I don't know what the next step is, but I'm at a standstill here in terms of a go-forward plan, because I'm not sure that we can go forward, not knowing the commitment from other partners. As councillor Brookswager said, you know, this is a big ask of CBRM.
It's time. Sorry. Councillor Glenn Perush?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Perfect segue to Mr. Green for what my next question was. What are our options? Like, if this, if the decision by council is to let this agreement expire, I guess I'll through you, Mayor, to Marie, what are our options if this, if this duds run out? Are we back to the drawing board, or where do we go from there?
I mean, we still can pursue a library project. It really doesn't, I guess it just means that we're not tied to this particular development agreement. It doesn't preclude HDRL from, you know, coming back to the table to renew or to bid on an RFP that we put out again, or it doesn't preclude going out, and if we want to look at other locations after June, then, I guess our options are endless if we want to, if the agreement expires in June, it doesn't preclude any of the options that are on the table.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Steve Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And this will be the last time I'll speak on the issue. I guess for me, it comes down to, there's been a lot of talk about partners and money. I guess for me, it comes down to, there's been a lot of talk about partners and money. Personally, I would never put an application into the government where I'm not ready and prepared to put skin in the game. Putting money into a project confirms that you're beyond the project. This project's been a limbo for 10 years, whether it's a part of a collage of things you want to do versus broken out to be a library. We haven't committed to doing anything. Now we're talking about going back, re-looking at sites, re-putting in an RFP for a developer. At the end of the day, we're going to have to have the need to have a developer, no matter what project we accept. It's a cost of doing business. The design development is a cost of doing business. That's your skin in the game. Without it, we're just going to spin and go around circles for another 10 years. And again, if we're beyond the project, yes, it's a capital that we're going to finance. It's not like we gotta take $7 million out of our budget today. We're financing it over a term. So again, we pay the debt on the service. So I just want people to put that in perspective. Committing to a project is putting skin in the game. You put your ass out there, you put the project surrounding the theme of truth and reconciliation, that becomes a theme of the project. That will draw attention from our provincial and federal funders. Thank you.
Councillor Gordon McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too would just like to go on record as being a big supporter of a library and the fact that we do, I think it's quite clear that we are in need of a new central library for the CBRM. You know, a library is a community hub, it's where people will come together and, you know, I believe there could be other spinoffs from having a structure like this in a community draw place where, you know, people can do things. Because I, from the sounds of it, the concept of this new library is going to be more than just books. It's going to be, you know, it's going to be technologically advantaged, it's going to be able to accommodate people with disabilities, and hopefully have our MIGMA partners to be able to be a part of that as well. Everything I'm hearing here, it is about money. And unfortunately, we're not HRM, and it'd be nice to have just a little bit of playroom in our budget to be able to say, yeah, let's move ahead and let's take this on and have something like the fiddle and drum concept down on the waterfront. It's just concerning that, you know, we're in a place where, you know, we're nickel and diamond. We have to pinch pennies and we don't have the funds to be able to, you know, to look at a $32 million project and how we can support that without any actual funding partners sitting here at the table in place. And I mean, certainly, I'm no businessman, I don't have that background experience, but, you know, reading all the material, I agree with Councillor Parsons. We've been, we've been running around in circles on this for 10 years, and we know we need to come to a conclusion whether or not we're going to build a new library and where it's going to be at and how we're going to develop it. And I think that's really how we gotta look at this. If it can't be on the waterfront, and if it's inconceivable to be on the waterfront, let's just, let's figure out where we gotta do this.
Councillor James Edwards.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And perfect segue again from Councillor McDonald. For me, you know, this is about a library, there's no question about it, but in the bigger picture, it's the whole development of the waterfront too that is exciting. And as much as it pains me, a guy from Glace Bay to be supporting a development on the Sydney waterfront, but this is huge. It's a fabulous, eye-appealing structure. The traffic that it would generate, the stats that were provided to us by the CBRL showing the number of patrons to their current facility. Now you add a Nova Scotia Community College in that area along with an apartment building and an office building, and I think that kind of foot traffic, you're looking at tripling or quadrupling. So, you know, go back to Councillor McDonald there about the money aspect, how do we pay for it? The taxes that's going to be generated there, I think it puts us in a good situation. But, you know, the eye appealing, when you think of the iconic pictures you see all the time of other harbors, Halifax waterfront and the like, I think this is a perfect opportunity for Cape Breton to really show our community drive and our, you know, just to make that the downtown core such a happening spot. So I encourage my fellow councillors to, let's take it as far as we can go. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Lauren Green.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr Parsons indicates a skin in the game. I have no problem putting skin in the game, but if we put skin in the game and we're the only ones at the table, then we're going to look pretty irresponsible to the taxpayers. So I have no issue with putting skin in the game. My issue here is that, you know, we're talking about a $12 million bill for CBRM, and no other partners are showing up to the table to say that they want to be part of this exciting movement. So that's my issue with the concept of the library going forward as a separate standalone project, that we, you know, can we afford it? That's the big question. We definitely need one, and we're definitely going to need other funding partners to see this to fruition. So I just want to know where we go from here. I mean, like I said earlier, we're on the timeline, you know, there's questions obviously councillors have in terms of where we go from here, and I need to be clear, you know, what this council supports at this point. You know, if it's just the funding applications we're going to put out there to find out if we can get this to the next phase, well then, we need to make a decision.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Cyril McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm over here scrambling to write some notes so I can know what I'm going to say. I guess the big thing for me, and while I agree with Councillor Parsons, and, you know, until we show a commitment, I think for 10 years, this has been a priority of our municipality. So I think it's pretty clear that it's a priority. To my colleague, Councillor Gillespie's point, the provincial government has been on record saying this isn't a priority. So I guess, you know, sure, so let's identify this as a priority. I think all of my colleagues here would agree, we need a new central library, and that's pretty clear, I think, anyway, maybe not. So I'm just wondering, and perhaps this is a question for our CFO or CAO, so we decide to move forward and it's a $12 million bill, as Councillor Green just says, in terms of money, can the municipality afford that? Do we have the borrowing power? Do we have the money in the coffers? Where do we cut? You know, how do we make this a decision? How can we decide on this today if we know that we can't afford $12 million putting a new library on our waterfront? Keeping in mind, I agree, we need a new library. So how do we make this work? Where does the money come from? And I'll defer to our staff, if that's okay, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. I suppose we can go.
Maybe there is no answer.
It's a difficult question because it's all about choices. So do we need, and I agree, everybody agrees, we need a new library. The one we have is, you know, really in disrepair. I mean, I guess as a starting point, it's unfortunate that there's no fund that we could say, you know, let's go away today and let's apply for funding for the design. Because we, I really feel like we're banging our head against the wall with the province and the federal government. You know, there's different messages, and we met with, you know, Jim Wooder the other day, and Jim was quite confident that there is funding there. And then I've made some calls and I'm not getting the same message, which is why we tried to get everybody in the room to have that discussion. So that's what's frustrating for us. We all agree, we all want a new library. We want our partners to be in, and we're hearing different stories from different places. So I guess if there was a fund to apply for a design, then we would be all over it. So I'm chasing that, and I'm not getting calls back. You know, MP Kelly was very helpful in pointing me in the right direction, but I'm still waiting call back from the province, from a call I made last week. So, and I, you know, I'll follow up on that today. So I guess that's what's frustrating for staff on our part. Can we afford $12 million? You know, that's a, there's all kinds of ways to fund that. You know, and I know no one ever wants to talk about, you know, taxes, but, you know, one cent tax can be $480,000 a year. Maybe it's a library tax, who knows, until it's paid off. Yeah, so there's all kinds of ways to fund that, but that's a decision of council, how they want to prioritize.
Mr Wooder, you can, you wanted to speak to that? Go ahead.
I'd like to come back, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just picking up on a couple of things that have been said, and Marie, I think, has fairly characterized it, sometimes there are mixed messages that are given, and sometimes you get a different story than we do. And I think Eldon, Councillor Eldon McDonald had it right, that it's time to get everybody in the same room. And to my understanding, a meeting of all levels of government on this question of this library has never happened. So there's been bilateral calls, we are actively engaged with MPs and MLAs, as you are, and the attempt to have that meeting to talk about design development funding never worked because I understand the province wanted some additional clarity. Let's give them the clarity, and my suggestion with respect would be, let's have the conversation to find out if there is a willingness to fund design development. To bring it back to the question of why we're here, why the next step in this process is not to fund a $32 million library, it's to get in the queue. And I think the message has been clear from your funding partners, that the project is not well enough characterized yet to be considered for a funding application. Kathleen said it best, we want to be in the queue so that when the funding opportunities open, we've got a project application that's well enough defined, that tells your partners, this is how much it's going to cost, this is what it looks like, this is what it is. And we haven't done that work yet. The real conversation we need to have, I suggest, is are we prepared to go that next step? Do the work to be in a position so that whenever the funds open up, they can be applied for? And we don't know it's a $12 million ask from CBRM, because we don't know what some of the funding criteria are in these various projects. It may be $7 million and a fundraising campaign that has been alluded to, and the land consideration might carry the day. We don't know. And I think it's a lot of speculation today around that, that's, with all the greatest respect, not particularly helpful. We haven't characterized the project well enough to be able to put an application forward. I think that's the question before council. It's about a million and a half bucks. It's your share of that, I would hope it might be 27% of that. Have the conversation, and let's try and drive this project forward. Thank you.
With all due respect, Mr Wooder, one of the directives from council was to meet with all funding levels, which we did, just how long ago? About a month ago?
A month.
Exactly. So just for clarity, I don't think it's fair to say that we haven't met with all the funders because we are.
My, that's a fair, my understanding was you didn't have the conversation, you went there for, and that's a meeting that's been looked for since Senator, since Mayor Clark suggested it in June of last year.
Next on the speakers list, Councillor Darren Brookswager.
I'll come back, Mayor. Forget what I was going to ask.
You're on the list.
Okay.
You're up, Councillor Eldon McDonald.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I won't continue on where I left off, but I will at another time. I would like to, I guess, speak to a few of the comments that have been made, I guess, when we look at Councillor Parsons' comments of skin in the game and Councillor Green's comments around that. I agree, we have to be in the game. But putting our voice forward, and if I can say, putting our money forward in regards to design development, if we're in and the other two aren't, there's nothing spent. We just get our money back, I'll say, as opposed to, Councillor Parsons would probably say, we get our skin back. But, so, we're not committing anything without three levels of government and other possible funding partners to move forward. If we put something forward, much like, I believe, and I can be correct if I'm wrong, I think, much like the dredge, when the dredge happened in the harbor, I believe this municipality put $2 million forward, and it made senior levels of government step up to the plate and fund the rest of it. Had CBRM not done that, maybe the harbor was never dredged. But I can tell you that the $2 million, it cost $19 million to dredge the harbor. CBRM wasn't in for 19, they were in for two. The other two came to the plate, we got our harbor dredged. If we don't want to be there at the table with our money first, we're going nowhere. The issue of, you know, there's money spent. We're hundreds of thousands of dollars into this between studies, work, technical work on the property, various different things that have happened over the last two and a half years. We talked, and no disrespect, and I might get cut off here, no disrespect to Councillor Edwards in regards to, you know, it pains him to support a Sydney waterfront library. And I understand that comment, because I know you get that from your communities, I hear that. But my comment back to that is, if we're going to have success in our municipality as a whole, Sydney's going to be the central core of that. And when we're successful here, we'll be paving streets everywhere in CBRM, we'll be fixing infrastructure sidewalks, underground infrastructure. But I can tell you, we've been struggling and struggling and nickel and diamond, as Councillor McDonald said, nickel and diamond ourselves, because we have no tax base, we've lost it.
That's time. Councillor Steve Gillespie.
Thank you, Mayor McDougall. I kind of lost my way, I didn't realize where I was in the queue, so thank you very much. Do we have a skin in the game? Yeah. But unfortunately, over the last 10 years, our skin has been beaten and bloodied. We're at a point now where we have to do something, and I understand that. I would like to pose a question, but before I do, over the last four years, being in council and being on the library board, I've seen both sides of this question, and I have been turned both sides as well, when it comes to the funding, with regards, we need a library, all of those are good questions. I think, given the situation with Harbour Royal and what we have seen from our provincial and federal colleagues, I'm going to say that to Harbour Royal, I apologize. I think we're standing in your way. I think because of what's happening, it's probably best for us to let the clock run out and then just work with you on your development, because I think your idea for a downtown development on that waterfront is a great opportunity for the CBRM. And because of what we've seen and what we've heard, and what's been happening over the last 10 years when it comes to a library funding, I just don't know if we have the ability or the political will or the partners to make this happen. The question I want to pose, and I wanted to say that to you because I believe in your project, the question I wanted to pose to Bill Murphy, if I could, is, Councillor Eldon McDonald explained that there were some issues with that current building right now, and I'd like to know if we have fixed those, because what he said in his statement was, it sounds like they're working in third world conditions. Could you please elaborate on what has been done to that library building at this point? And is it actually inhabitable? And are we okay with staff?
Sure. First of all, I think the important principle is any municipal building that the municipality is associated with is generally in a safe condition for public use. So I think that's the first principle. People talk about the library emotionally. Phil, pull your mic in. Oh, sorry, thank you, thank you. Regarding what the Building Division of the municipality has done continuously over the last 25 years, is actually look at the library in terms of what it needs to keep itself current. So from a standpoint of a building safety standpoint, I think it's fair to say that it's a reasonably safe building. Does it have shortcomings? Absolutely. And they've been articulated here, here most of the morning. From where the immediate concern is on the building, and Councillor McDonald did address it, has to do with a leaky roof. This building has a lot of flat roof designs, and you will be faced very shortly with a capital request of $50,000 to put into the building this year for addressing some primarily leak concerns on the flat roof of the building. So my response is the building is safe, the building has shortcomings, and the municipality will continue to invest in it as long as it owns it to ensure that it's safe for public use.
Thank you, Bill.
Councillor Cyril McDonald and Councillor Darren Brookswager to follow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a comment, and more of a funny comment, I guess, as I sit with my county colleagues, when Councillor Eldon McDonald speaks of paving in all of the CBRM, I will still not be able to get a road paved in District 3, but thank you. To Mr Wooder's comment in saying that we haven't, I don't know exactly what you said, but something along the lines of we haven't made this a priority, or we haven't really been, you know, pushing this. I campaigned in District 3, you know, my, which in some areas is quite far from the central library, and probably every second person said, where do you stand on our library? In 2011, which is now 10 years ago, the first In 2011, which is now 10 years ago, the first study was done on the library. We've been working, or not me personally, we as a municipality have been working on this for 10 years. To say that we haven't been doing anything or making this a priority, I, I'd like to, to make it a point that I disagree with you. And I think my, my council colleagues and my predecessors would, you know, Counselor Darren Brooks-Schweiger's been here quite a while, and I'm sure that, that he would also disagree. Council has done a substantial amount of work on the library. And here we are now, two and a half, almost three hours in debating, you know, and conversing around this library. So to say that we haven't been doing anything, I, I would like to, to, you know, look for a little bit of clarity perhaps, on what you meant by that. And then further to, to our, my comments earlier around funding and where the money comes from. I guess it's, I'd like to maybe ask our CFO, and although I know it's ultimately our decision, where the money comes from. In your opinion, do you think that there's $12 million, or $10 million, or 15, or seven, whatever it is, do you think that there's that much that we can be cutting back to make this feasible? So I'll start with Mr. Wooder, and I'll move to our CFO. Thank you.
Counselor, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, I certainly don't recall that my remarks suggested CBRM had done nothing to advance a public library. Our whole presentation today really supports your point. There's been a heck of a lot done. What I was referring to specifically, there seems to be a consensus of agreement among your funding partners. As far as my intelligence tells me, as far as the conversations our so-called team has had with them, is that the project needs better definition. It needs clarity that it's the waterfront, that CBRM's behind. And it needs some further definition of the project to be able to be put into an application form to support an application. I think Mayor Clark finally came to grips with that in June of last year, when he suggested to his MLAs and MPs, I believe it was at the Pride fundraising ceremony, that an effort be made to advance design development and to jointly fund it. What I said was, that conversation has yet to happen. That was June of 2020. I know that there's been an effort by the mayor recently to advance that, which we're very grateful for. That meeting happened, but you did not discuss the issue of whether the funding partners are prepared to support design development. Mike Kellaway has told me, and I don't mind quoting him here today, that we need to know what the project is. If you're asking us to get into the game with you, tell us more clearly what the project is. Yes, it's the waterfront. Let's do some design development work. Counselor Parsons can speak to this. You know, he's in the business, similarly to what we're trying to accomplish here, of building infrastructure. And I think he will say that, you know, you can't go to an, into an application process easily these days unless there's an enormous amount of political will, without a sufficient level of work done to be able to articulate the project with a Class C cost estimate. So I think your funding partners may well be willing to participate, but they want to hear, it's, you're behind the library on the waterfront, at least through design development, till you get to the point where you understand the project well enough, including the cost, to then come back for a further application. So I think that's really what's, what's at issue. Do you want to advance that concept now? It's going to cost a bit of money to do that. I think your funding partners need to be there. And I think that they're willing to engage in the conversation. So I'm sorry, sir, if I mischaracterized it, but that, I think, is the, is the issue. And that's what my remarks were directed towards. Is that clear enough, sir?
Yeah, thanks for the clarity. I appreciate it.
And our CFO?
Okay. So just to, I guess, continue on with the comments made by our CAO, there's definitely, would have to be some compromises made to our other capital projects to fully accommodate this particular project within our existing borrowing policy, for sure. Obviously, we could spend our capital budget 100 different ways, and justifiably so, on various projects in each that are important to everybody's community. We do prepare our capital budget with council policy at the forefront, as far as our borrowing capacity goes. So our borrowing policy states that we do not borrow more in one year than we pay back as a means of keeping our current debt levels constant. That being said, it's at council's discretion whether they want to go outside of that policy or not. The province does keep a very close eye on our borrowing levels and whether or not our borrowing is affordable. They ultimately have to approve what we borrow in any fiscal year. They sign off on our temporary borrowing resolutions, and they ultimately say whether or not you can borrow or not. Currently, our debt servicing costs are between 10% and 11% of our own source revenues. Own source revenues are facility rentals, taxation, transit revenues, solid waste revenues, anything that the municipality either taxes or levies a fee for. Going outside the policy and borrowing more, is there a little bit of capacity to borrow and still be within our moderate risk threshold? Moderate risk is between 10% and 15%. So there is a little bit of flexibility, but really, not a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our speakers list, Counselor Darren Brooks-Schweiger.
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess I want to start just with the comment on the importance of us all being regional councillors. And I've prided myself on that from the time I was elected. I know the importance that, to look at around this whole municipality, to make sure that we fill the needs that are needed. And I can speak, though, you know, just on the Glace Bay Miners Forum project. We had lots of people at the public meeting. Mayor, and you were there, and Counselor McDonald, where people were wanting a pool, and they were wanting different things. But we knew, as councillors, that we couldn't bring that back to this municipality because of our financial situation to try to get that approved. We knew the money wasn't there, the same way it isn't right now. But the same point is, we've all supported regional projects. The Second Birth, the Boardwalk, the same as everything else. So I think that's important, as we all sit here, new and elderly councillors here today. Mayor, I don't know where we're heading here today to finalize, but I think what we have to do then is find out if maybe we want to talk about the, the Class 3 thing that we got to get funded for $1.5 million, and see if the other partners are on side, because this is going to have to bring it to a head, I guess, in my opinion. Dollar-wise, June is coming, it's vastly approaching. And I think one way or the other, we, based on some of the comments about water flowing in on people and all this here talk, we can't continue with that. We have to make some kind of a temporary moves or whatever. Even if we start this project, it's going to take a few years to, to complete. So, Bill, you got to fix that roof regardless, right? That, that's stuff that has to be done. So I think we've heard a lot today, we said a lot. And I think we got to move forward by finding out, Maria, if you can get funding from provincial and feds to complete that project. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next, Counselor Steve Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I said I wasn't going to say anything else, but I guess that's me. You know, we're asking a lot of good questions, hypothetical questions, a lot on the finances. We're not able to answer them with true definition until we're ready to make a commitment. And that commitment clearly is Class C estimates. It costs money to do a Class C estimates. Architects are involved, designers are involved. You need to design it, then you got to get quotes on pricing. This is where you come up with your number. To sit down with an MP and say that we consulted with our MPs, they can't commit to a financial project. The first thing they got to do is bring it up in the House and talk to a minister on it. So again, we're not going to get that financial commitment from our MPs or MLAs without truly defining what we're asking for. If we don't do that, we're spinning our wheels. We'll never get a commitment, because we don't know what we're asking for. We're debating whether we're going to borrow $12 million versus $7. We can't even define that right now. So until we decide to spend some money, take a risk, like every business opportunity is, and then we'll hopefully reward the benefits of making that commitment, everybody agrees this is a project, but saying it's a project and committing some resources to it, we won't know. That's all I say. Thank you.
Just to clarify, my discussions with the MP and with the province were around funding the design, not of the big project.
Counselor Eldon McDonald?
Thanks very much, Madam, Madam Mayor. And I'll try to, I guess, go back to where I was making comment before about trying to move projects forward and trying to increase our tax base. But before I do that, just following up, I did have a motion that I was wanting to put forward to accomplish what we're trying to speak about here today in regards to accessing discussions around the design development. And that motion wasn't allowed to be on the table at that council meeting. Unfortunately, I don't have the exact wording of that here with me today. But I, what I can say, and it may be acceptable, and at the end of this discussion, if it would be open to you, Madam Mayor, for me to move that motion after we finish our discussions here, I could somewhat recall the original motion that was unanimously passed on January 26 with an addition. And the only difference in the motion I was proposing that wasn't allowed to stay in the agenda, the only difference was, I wanted to clarify that it was a waterfront library. That wasn't going to change anything other than that. It was going to, because the province needed clarity, it was a waterfront library. So my motion that I would have wanted to put forward that night had it been on the agenda was just to add in that it was the waterfront library as proposed by HRDL and Triffus Consultants. I can't remember the exact wording, unfortunately, but I would be willing to put that forward at the end of the meeting. Just to go back to my comments in regards to, you know, tax base. We have growth in our community that we see. We feel the excitement, you see the excitement. It's happening in our community. It hasn't happened for decades and decades. We've been losing our tax bases. Why we continue to say that we don't have money to do anything? We have an opportunity in front of us to promote growth and attract young professionals. Realizing that, you know, a lot of development's happening in downtown Sydney, that's what's going to grow our economy across the board. It's going to help everyone across the board. And Counselor Cyril McDonald understands completely and apologized for the road comment, it's always just first thing and top of mind, but it's going to prove-
That's time. I can put you back on the list.
Certainly, thank you.
Counselor James Edwards?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to clarify my earlier comments and my ill-advised attempt at humor about Glace Bay to Sydney there. I was absolutely advocating for the CBRM waterfront as opposed to Sydney. So I just want to have that on record. I think the, the concept for the, for the, for the harbor, regardless if it was in Leesburg, is fabulous. But it's, it's all about the CBRM. So I apologize if my earlier comments were taken out of context. Thank you.
Counselor Steve Gillespie.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor McDougal. When it comes to the priorities, I don't think there's any doubt that this is a priority for us. But let's be cautious about what we say and, and how we proceed when it comes to the province. Under the previous premier, priorities were health and education. And I don't think there's any doubt about that. Every time former premier Stephen McNeil spoke, he said health and education were his priorities. And they really were. And we can see that happening right now in New Waterford, in North Sydney, and here in Sydney. So I think that that is their priority. But when you look at what the current premier, Ian Rankin is saying, his priorities are accessibility and the environment. And he has been very public about those. So I don't know if, if the province would switch and fund one large project that we talk about accessibility needs, when that money could go into literally hundreds of small projects which talk about accessibility. So when it comes to what the premier is looking at now versus what the premier looked at before, I think we have to keep that into consideration. I understand exactly where Counselor James Edwards was coming from. I worked on the library board for four years. And one of the most important things that we did on that board was to move the library from Union Street to Commercial Street. And I think that the entire town of Glace Bay and surrounding area has benefited from that.
Thank you, Counselor. Deputy Mayor Earlene McMullin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing has changed. Like, I, I guess I'm really, really confused that we, as a council, from the three years ago, this June, have approved everything in principle. And the whole idea of in principle is that we totally respect and love the idea, but that's making sure it is feasible, that it is something we can afford to build, that we can maintain. Like, that's what the goal was. From day one, and please, someone correct me if I'm wrong, this is the point of the whole tender process. This, well, this was an addition, because we didn't tender for a library, but that's another tough conversation. But we gave exclusivity for the project. We made that very clear, that we support it in principle, and that it is at the discretion of HRDL. We also made it very clear upfront what our, our contributions would be. The $3 million in cash that we don't have, that we will borrow on and pay a return rate on. We are willing to borrow 300 in cash, and we have the land. Has any of that changed in the three years? I, I don't know why we keep getting, coming back, well, what's your commitment? Where do you stand? I'm pretty sure that's why we signed the agreement. That's why we gave this ability to an outside partnership, and here's what we have. You bring back what we can do, because is, is that, am I, do, I'm not a businessperson either, but that is my understanding of the process. So again, it keeps getting put back to us that, well, what do you want? Well, I think we made it very clear that in principle, if you can build it, and we can put in what we have, if we can build a $40, $40, I wish, $40 million, $30 million library on the waterfront, with our $3 million in cash and our land, by all means, man, I'll sell bottles to keep it running every year. But please, bring in the money. But we have what we have, and that was what was approved by council. So someone needs to give me direction, why it keeps coming back, that we're not in it, or we're not committed, or what do you want?
That's time.
That's it.
Any further discussion? Counselor Steve Gillespie?
Thank you, Mayor McDougal. I'm wondering if part of this entire process, as we're talking about the library itself. I go back to the study from 2016, which is on page eight. And there are three different designs with three different pricings. And I'm wondering if, if we're going to start talking about the library, that maybe we should have those three updated? And then that would give us the opportunity to look at whether we can afford or not afford, as somebody had indicated. The expectation is that a waterfront, a library, would cost us maybe $3 million more to build. I'd be very interested in that. That's just something that I was looking at as we were, as we were talking here. So I would ask Director Wayne McDonald if he could just maybe elaborate on that a little bit. Thank you.
Counselor, could you repeat that?
Yes. Sorry, Wayne, I'm just wondering if, if it would be within our purview or if it's something we would consider, updating the 2016 study and costs when, with regards to a new library? As three of them were laid out, I'm just wondering if that's something that would help us, as Deputy Mayor had indicated, when it comes to the cost and what we're, we can put in and that kind of stuff? Just asking.
Yeah, so, yes, I, the next steps, obviously, it's been communicated today. The next steps are involved, are associated with soft costs, pre-design, class C estimates, the next steps include those. include those. The difficulty has been that the funds that have been available for the last few years have not been available for soft costs only. They're full project-type pieces. But those costs are certainly going to be current at the end of the next phase. That's the whole reason for doing an enhanced pre-design or design development, or however we coin that next phase. But absolutely, that's the whole reasoning would be to get the funding or the cost estimates. On top of that, and certainly it's been mentioned previously, the new requirements for new buildings are significantly more expensive. That has to be determined as well, because an old cost based on, you know, a typical building standard of five or six years ago is completely different than a net zero-ready or a Leeds Gold or a significantly high-efficiency design. And those questions all have to be answered. And as I mentioned previously, as soon as we heard about this fund was opening, we sent those questions specifically to the federal government to see what are the minimum requirements, what are the maximum requirements. 2030 is coming fast, but I expect that new funds coming forward are going to be high-efficiency designs at minimum of significant leads. But they could include a net zero or zero-net-ready. We recently had a provincial application that went through the Department of Energy and Mines, and that funding application had only, the only thing that would qualify were associated with transit and other types of projects, but they had to be zero-net-ready. So that's where some of those discussions have come from. That was a minimum requirement for those applications.
Thank you.
Counselor Eldon McDonald.
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. Just following up some of the comments. Counselor Gillespie mentioned the direction of the provincial government being very much focused on healthcare and education, and I think that bows to be true. The other thing is, though, there's much more funding in our province to fund other things, such as libraries. And I'll use the example of an art gallery in Halifax, which is being funded by the provincial government by, I think, somewhere around $75 million. Now, some people would say that has nothing to do with healthcare or education. Some people would say it does have to do with education. People can go into an art gallery and learn and get educated. People will go into a library that have literacy issues or to teach young people that are coming through to not be literate. That's part of our poverty issue here, is literacy. If you want to put a library into education, we can do that, because libraries are all about education. But, and no disrespect to Counselor Gillespie, I'm sure when we talk about healthcare and education, we automatically think of hospitals and schools. Well, a library's not a school. It's definitely about education. We do have support from provincial government in a written letter from Leo Gavine encouraging us to continue our good work, to make this happen. I don't know if we have written confirmation from the province that they're not supporting a library. I've never seen that. I've heard that. I've never seen that. But I do have a letter here from Minister Gavine suggesting we should move this project forward. You know, when we look at the opportunities of investment in our community, I can't state enough, it's a picture in the last page of the documents that we had here today presented by Spiro, Halifax Library, and it was an empty lot next to it, taken two weeks ago. There was a building on that lot, a whole block, it's gone. It's going to be completely rebuilt?
That's time.
Because it wants to be next to the library. Should have done five minutes. If I could come back whenever.
Sure. Any further discussion? Did you want to come back, Counselor?
Earlyn.
Oh, sorry. My apologies. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Another question, if, I know that there's no motion on the floor as of yet, but I do know one is coming. So my question is, the current agreement, because we are supportive in principle 100%. The agreement expires in June. So regardless, if people want to do something else, now is not the time. We don't have that ability as a council. We are in agreement with, as we should be, and we need to be respectful of that. My question is, if this does go to a development, if we go to move forward with the development study, does that automatically extend what happens to, because I highly doubt by the time it's tendered out, returned, completed, in a timeline perspective, if this agreement ends in June and we, as a council, decide to move forward with the development study, how does that affect that timeline? And I guess where does that put us as a council? Maybe perhaps this is a Dimitri question? I'm not really sure, but Marie's nodding yes, so through you, Madam Mayor, to Dimitri.
The agreement ends in June, so council would, if this is not done in that time, which we don't suspect it would be, council would have to make a decision whether they're going to extend the agreement, which they can if they're saying, okay, we're looking into design development, and there's an application, and they can certainly extend the agreement if they so wish. They could let the agreement lapse and enter into a new agreement if the partners are willing to do so. But, I mean, it ends in June. It's not, there's no condition that if we put an application in, it automatically extends. I don't know if that answers your question.
So potentially, if we put in an application and then as a council decide not to extend the agreement, we possibly-
Your time, I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor. Counselor Eldon McDonald was next on the list. Counselor Steve Parsons, then we can go back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thanks very much. Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. And just referencing when I got, my two minutes was up, was the picture on the document here with the block next to the Halifax Library. We're not Halifax, but we need to progress. We need to build our community. We're the second-largest municipality in Atlantic Canada, and we're far from economically looking like one, and we need to build in that direction. If you look at the top right-hand corner of that same photo, there's a brand-new building. You can just see the top of it, newly built since the library's been there. Residential, commercial development. Across the street, where you can't see, another block tore down, redeveloped and built. This public investment will drive private developers around your waterfront. That's going to increase our tax base, and that's going to improve our community. We talked about this out in our strategic planning sessions, about building vibrant, healthy communities, and this will help achieve that goal. I would, if I could, ask Madam Mayor, through you, just Lisa Mulax here from the library, if I could ask her to come to the mic so I could just ask a couple of questions. And if my time's up when she gets there, I'll just come back.
Yeah. There are other speakers on the list.
Yeah, certainly.
You have 40 seconds. Go.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks very much, Lisa, for coming today. I'm just wondering in regards to, we've recently had new libraries in our municipality. I think last year, a year and a half ago, Glace Bay moved to the middle of Commercial Streets. We also have a new one over in North Side a number of years ago. Can you give me an idea, if you know, I'm not sure if you have indication of this, but I'm just curious, has there been visitor increase in those libraries since they were relocated?
Definitely there has been. We've seen foot traffic increase in both locations. I don't have numbers for you, but you would see, you know, more people coming through the doors for sure.
Yeah, so those locations being in the heart of the downtown and new and large-
Your time.
Okay, great. I'll come back with another question.
Sorry. I'm trying to be fair to everyone. So Counselor Steve Parsons?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a point of clarity as relates to our existing relationship with, with the, sorry, the Harbor Road Development. Is it not in the existing agreement, maybe through you to Dimitri? As part of the existing contract, if council so chooses to have these group, including Triffus, who's certainly able to put together a design development plan, as he indicated today, is it not within the confines of that contract that if council so chooses to take it to that level, to define the design development, could we not just engage, if council so chooses, with our existing contract? Or do we have to go for another RFP to do design development?
If we're going to have someone do design as part of a funding application, we would put that out as per our procurement policy.
That wasn't a part of our existing contract?
It's not, no. They're not the design developers as such. They are, we're collaborating with them as the developer. But if we're going out to have someone do a consultant on a design, I would suggest it should be part of our procurement process.
Absolutely. I didn't know if that was in the existing contract or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Back to Deputy Mayor Earlyn McMullin. No, you're good. Okay. Counselor Eldon McDonald.
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. And I'm just wondering, just in regards to asking questions of Lisa, just wondering, I brought up some information and comments in regards to some of the deficiencies. I don't know if there's other things that you would like to highlight or things that may come to mind that I haven't mentioned.
So in regards to the building, is that what you're referring to, the current building?
Yes, yes.
Definitely, we know of the leaks in the building. That's, you know, the other day, we had to get a bigger bucket for the window that was added in headquarters, so the new extension in headquarters. And when I speak to Jamie Gillis about that, that's been looked at numerous times, and that's an ongoing issue. So leaks are definitely an issue. We know that the beautiful stained glass window at McConnell has been recently boarded up because of rod issues. And of course, accessibility is a huge issue in this building. And broken windows, too. We've had numerous windows that just don't open anymore because they're broken.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if I still have time or not.
You have about 30 seconds.
Okay, well, I'll just come back. That's fine, I'll come back.
Counselor Darren Brookschweiger.
There's no question, and from here and from Lisa, and over the years of the constant complaints, we have to be responsible and come up with a plan, Madam Mayor. And being responsible is probably going to include something that we can afford as well. And, you know, it may not have all the bells and whistles and the sizes and the waterfront, but we definitely got to get a library replacement. So what I'm hoping that we're going to do is that if we're going to approve something for a class C design of this thing, right, to get it to that next level, we're going to have to hear something coming back on a partnership. Mr. Wooder mentioned earlier about the possibility of, you know, whatever we're in for, and then maybe there's different people that'll come to the table to help. I think by June, we're going to have to hear that. And now, if this thing is extended, I don't know what the cop is, I had to go to the washroom, Madam Mayor, but if we're going to extend it until the study is complete, I'm certainly all in favor of that until it's complete. But I got to say that, we got to know, and we got to bring this thing to a head. If we can't afford to do the job, the whole thing, based on the partners, we got to finish this up and build something that we can afford or get a replacement building for our library. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Eldon McDonald.
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. And I'll go back to what I had prepared to speak on here today as opposed to going from questions. Madam Mayor, experience in other communities demonstrate that new libraries can be a catalyst for downtown revitalization and economic development. They attract residents and visitors to create vibrant retail and commercial districts, which in turn invites new investment. And libraries contribute to the municipality's image and identity as cornerstones of creative cities and ventures for arts, culture, and heritage events. When part of a large scheme for downtown urban renewal, they become placemakers in public spaces, contributing to broader urban design and development objectives in progressive communities. The proposed development will not only correct the limitations of the current library services, it will support future economic, social, and cultural objectives for CBRM. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to move our municipality to sustainability. Our library advocates have been consistently reminded by prospective funding partners that once the post-COVID infrastructure is finished, regarding its sources, there will likely be a very long time before a similar opportunity will arise again. Some may say we can't afford. I say, my glass is half-full. We can't afford not to. To pass this project up with possibility of 73% potential in funding would be a huge mistake, in my opinion. Our library staff and community need and deserve the same prosperity that communities across Nova Scotia and Canada are experiencing with new modern libraries, and I say we should pursue the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Deputy Mayor?
I'm hoping, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm hoping soon that there's a motion put to the floor, because we're starting to just go around in circles, and I, myself, acknowledging that, and I keep hitting this button. So I don't run my house on my glasses half-empty, like, or half-full. I know there's a building you can come. I just want to put it out there. I also toured the Halifax Library. I also spoke to the manager there that their municipality is able to put in, what is it, just over $2 million in operating costs per year? We obviously don't have that. I know we need a further study to find out exactly what our operating costs are, but I know they're going to be much larger than they currently are, and we're having trouble affording those. I also want to bring to people's attention that we heard all the positivity about building new libraries, which we are going to have a new facility of some type. That is not the question. So I think as council, we really need to forget that it's not about will we have a new library? The answer is yes. It's about this development and can we afford this particular development. Port Hoxbury reporter just reported that three libraries are being reduced to, it's either reduced 15 hours a week or being reduced to 15 hours a week due to new library funding on operating. So we can talk about bringing all the economic development. You know what? If it was built on the waterfront, development will follow. If it's rebuilt on Charlotte Street, development will follow. If it's built downtown North Sydney, development will follow. The building is going to go somewhere or be revamped, and everything that we talked about today, reconciliation, economic development, education, that will all take place. So let's put that aside, but keep in mind that right now, within our own Cape Breton Island, library services are currently being cut. We can put it, Truro, Truro's a nice example, they reutilized a building. They did not build what we're looking for. So gosh, like, I love the concept of if we build it, they will come, but I can't do my home budget on that, and I certainly don't expect the residents to look at me and say, you know what, you're a great counselor. Don't worry about the finances, just think, and it'll happen. I can't answer my people and say, well, I'm pretty sure we're going to do all right. Last I checked, library cards are free, so I don't see how that's going to pay for itself, and I know Halifax doesn't.
Thank you. Just before I go to the next speaker, we have surpassed our three-hour hopeful deadline of meetings by a half an hour. So I do acknowledge the importance of this conversation. We can continue, but we will need to come to some sort of end here, whether that be a motion or some directive, but we cannot just keep going around. Counselor Eldon McDonald, just one moment, please.
Oh, yeah, no, no. Wait and get on the list.
We need to come to an agreement here, one way or another. So I have no problems. I've been taking notes. I can come up with a couple directives that we can move forward with. If anybody else has a motion, right now is the time to put it on the floor. Counselor Eldon McDonald?
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. I was just waving to get on the list, so I didn't know there was nobody on the list. So, yeah, and if a motion is in order, I would be willing to put that motion forward. It was my understanding when the meeting was booked today that we were booked for four hours, from 9:30 to 4:30.
In the calendar, yes, just to block it.
Okay. Yeah, so I would be willing to move that motion. And again, I'll say it based on what I can recall from my original motion of January 26, which was to move forward with design development funding as per the TCI report that was submitted to us on January 26. I'll say in consultation with HRDL and Triffus Design in regards to seeking funding for, well, actually, I'm going to stop there, actually, because you're saying that we're going to have to go to tender, right? So I guess I'll make, I'll make, I'll try to make it simpler as opposed to try to remember my last motion. Wayne had indicated that we would be looking at class C for design development, I believe, is what he referred to. So if I could move that motion, that we move forward with going for the design development funding, and that we arrange a meeting with the funding partners that we did, as we did in the past, and if we could pursue that level of funding.
So the-
For a waterfront library.
Specific to the waterfront library. So the motion is to go forward in pursuit of funding for the design phase, am I correct?
Design development.
Design and development phase, specific to the waterfront development.
You have it there.
Okay, do you want to reread that just for clarity? Counselor McDonald, you said a few things there.
So I may, no, I don't, no, yeah, I do, but I don't wear them. And you'll have to forgive me with, I wasn't planning on putting this forward at the meeting. So I do have in this reference to Harbor Road Development. So I guess for clarity, if I leave that in the motion, is that going to complicate the motion because we have to go to tender? I guess I would ask that through you, Madam Mayor, to Dimitri, if I could.
You're asking if we have to go to tender for design development?
Well, when I, if council would indulge, allow me to read what I had, and maybe you could give comment on it, because if it's an improper motion, I wouldn't put it forward. So through you, Madam Mayor, if I could do that? Thank you. So it's moved by, it says moved by Counselor McDonald, second by whoever. Council approved the service program operational plans as submitted by TCI Management Consultants' Report in collaboration with Harbor Road Development Limited and Triffus Design Consultants as per the pre-development agreement signed between the Cape Breton Regional Municipality and Harbor Road Development to allow funding options to be established for the design development phase of the project in pursuing the construction of a new Sydney Central Waterfront Library. If that motion is put forward in that regards through you, Madam Mayor, to Dimitri, is that complicated with that wording in regards to going to tender, if that's what we have to do?
Well, obviously, you're going to be collaborating with HRDL, because they're our, you know, I guess, partner, for lack of a better word, on this project. If your motion, if the intent of your motion is to say, here, we're just going to sole-source design development to HRDL, I would suggest that that's not appropriate. If it's in conjunction with these guys, we're going to move on to design development phase and get funding for that and collab, then yes, that's fine. I don't know what the intent of what you're saying is.
Well, my intent is to be able to get in the room with all the funding partners and discuss the design development funding for a waterfront library.
You could simply, your motion could simply be to apply for- You could simply, your motion could simply be to apply for funding for design development? Because essentially, that's what you want to do, isn't it?
Okay, well, that's the, the end goal, yes, but I wanted to make sure it was clear. I'm looking for clarity, because the province wanted clarity in a waterfront library. So I kept the exact words in my original motion, and then added in the piece with HRDL and the design development phase around the waterfront library. That's why I added that in, because the province needed clarity. So I don't want to go back with another motion that is different and doesn't have clarity.
Counselor, the province wanted clarity whether or not this project was a priority. I don't think they needed clarity on whether or not we're partnering with HRDL on-
No, it was, it was on the waterfront. So that, that's why I'm saying. So I'll, I'll put it forward. Hopefully, it's not gonna come back as not clear enough, but here we go. So moved by myself, the counsel approved the service program operational plan as submitted to CI, as submitted in the C, TCI Management Consultants' Report. To allow funding options to be established for the design development phase of the project in pursuing the construction of a new Sydney Central Waterfront Library as presented by HRLDL, HRDL.
That was moved by Counselor McDonald. It is a rather complicated motion. I do not hear a seconder. Seconded by Counselor Steve Parsons, discussion on the motion-
Question on the, on the motion, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
So what's happening with that first motion that was moved and seconded?
That was it. Which?
The first motion that you moved and Steve seconded. What's happening with that motion?
It's the same, it's the same one. He just read it twice.
He read it more thoroughly.
Yeah, he read it twice.
Okay, can you read that again to me? Because I think it says something about operational in there, and I'm not really comfortable with giving operational consideration for something that we don't even have yet. So I think the motion you're looking to get to the floor is just to send it out to design, the next step, a design concept. But there was something in there about funding. If we're looking for funding for the design concept, then, as Counselor Parsons indicated earlier, we're not gonna have any skin in the game, because we're going out looking for funding versus we're doing it. Is that my understanding?
Do you want to provide some clarity, Counselor, on your motion?
Again?
I, I can't speak to your motion, I'm sorry.
No, no, I understand that, that's, you try to get clarity, and, and people aren't clear, so... And again, I, I would've been better prepared, but I was going to put this originally through after, at this meeting, so I didn't think that's what we were going to do. Anyway, I guess for clarity purposes, when we talk about the operational, the operational report was, was done by TCI Management, and that was to find out the costs of, of increase to the library for operational, which come out around $240,000 as an increase. So... That's part of the operational. The meeting that I'm looking to get with the funding partners is for us to be able to go in and consider those documents, because those documents reference what, what we're looking to build. And we need to move to design development funding, which we have said here today is at approximately 1.5 million. So it would be simply to go in and have that discussion with the funding-level partners to see if there is options available for us to be able to access equal funding on the provincial level and equal funding on the federal level to make that design development happen.
Okay.
Don't know if that's clarifying or not.
So this needs to just be simplified. I, I think it's become much more complicated than necessary.
I'll withdraw my motion, if you wish.
Counselor Parsons?
I think, for clarity purposes, it's my, how I read that is that we will engage in that discussion about the other two partners coming in for their half a million dollars each, to a total of 1.5. Do we have our $500,000 to put in as our share? If so, the conversation is to the other two potential partners. Do you have yours, so we collectively, we got 1.5, to engage in a developed design? That's how I understand. Which makes?
Deputy Mayor?
My apologies, Madam Mayor. I'm only gonna add to the confusion, but I'm, I'm going to touch base on what Counselor Eldon McDonald did touch on. When we did meet, it was the province-specific that wanted more clarity on where we stood as a council. So when Counselor McDonald does talk about the waterfront, that is actually part of it. Because what's gonna happen here is if we just pass this without saying where, the first question that's gonna come back is, okay, well, what are you supporting? Are you, because it did come out, and I believe the quote was, and I'm pretty good at this, my husband tells me all the time, I never forget what somebody says when I don't agree. We have to come forward as a council with 100% backing the specific idea and location as presented, or we have to come forward with what we want in order to get the proper response from the province. So I do believe that we need to be very clear as a council, and not go in just thinking that, okay, this is just for a library in general, or it will come back to us. And that's why we're here today in the end.
Okay, motion is, is on the floor. Any further discussion?
So, Madam Mayor, I have a question.
By all means.
A million and a half dollars has been kicked around here as cost for this. Is this an estimate? Like, is that a, a ballpark figure, or where'd that come from?
I do believe it came from Harbour Royale, but also cited in the study, if I'm not mistaken? No? Wayne?
Thank you for the question. The original $1.5 million budget is associated with preliminary design work and design development, as, as included in your package on page 21 that was prepared by Harbour Royale. It fits in the size of typical type of pre-designed numbers for a project of that $30 million size. So I guess the key is, if counsel moves forward with, with, with that phase, those types of costs come off of the, the further cost of design.
Sure.
So you're basically doing them early. A project this size, as I indicated in the previous communication earlier on in the presentation today, definitely would be recommended as a project of this size. We, we, we do those type of phases for projects that-
So before I run out of time, if it's, if it's 40 million that the project came in at, is it usually 5%? What costs is 2 million, is that?
Well, there's a range based on how much, how much work you actually do as part of the pre-designed phase. There's a number of items that have been identified. You start with about the 2 to 3, 2 to 3% range. You could be as high as 5, depending on how many items you, you would put forward. I guess if counsel's recommending or putting motion forward that we go towards that amount of money, that would be an estimate at this point. If we are successful, then we would move forward with that amount of work.
So we agreed to that. Am I up? Okay, that's okay.
Sorry?
That's all right.
Any further discussion on the motion? Oh, okay, I have Counselor Gordon McDonald, then Counselor Cyril McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I'm a little bit confused on the motion itself, and, and what, what you're asking of us here as counsel. So, so this motion, is this asking us to go talk to the funding, the other funding partners to, for our 1/3 share of the development and planning part of, of, of this stage? Are you ask, or are you asking us that, are, are we here committing $500,000 to this part on this motion? And, like, is that, is that kinda where we're at on this? Like, I'm kinda confused as to how, what we're actually talking about here.
Our solicitor would like to, to offer some advice?
If, if I'm understanding and hearing correctly, what I, what I'm interpreting Counselor McDonald's motion is that, correct me if I'm wrong, that we are making a motion to commit X amount of dollars to design development, contingent on the other levels of government putting in their share. I, I think that's the nuts and bolts of your, your motion, if, if, I'm, I'm correct. That we're gonna put in 500,000. We're making a motion to do that, committing that money, contingent upon the other levels of government, putting in the motion to fund the design development as well. It, I, I think.
Counselor, if you'd like to provide clarity on your motion?
Thanks, thanks very much, Madam Mayor. Yes, I, I would agree with the solicitor on that. We would be committing that, because for us to go and sit down and have discussions with the senior levels of government, and not have money on the table, and them to put money on the table, then they would have to come up back and say to us, well, can you go back to your council and see if, you know, the feds come and say, well, we're in, the province says we're in, can you go back and see if your council's in? Be preferably for us to be at the table like the dredge, and saying, we're in for, for, again, using the 1.5, a third, a third, we're in for $500,000. We have money on the table. And I think if they're gonna come across with a million dollars, I don't think that this council would, would choose to then back out of putting our share in when they came to the table and we asked them to. So I think it's fair to say what, what solicitor Katya Vanis has, has indicated would be what my intentions would be. Thank you.
Counselor Cyril McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was looking for clarity as well, but I'm just wondering, should we be asking for a third instead of, or indicating we're, we're contributing a third instead of putting a dollar figure to it? I'm just thinking, if, if it comes back and it's 600,000, then we need to have this conversation again? So should we be committing to a third instead of $500,000, which seems to be a number that may be more, may be less? Just looking for some clarity, so...
Yeah.
Go ahead. It's at the discretion of counsel? Yeah.
Okay, then I, I would, I would like to amend the motion that we ask for a third, or we, we are in agreeance that we're contributing a third of the, whatever that dollar value is. It's of my counsel, my colleagues' opinion. Thanks.
I'll second the amendment.
So the motion has now been amended to include the 1/3 contribution from CBRM Council, moved by Counselor Cyril McDonald, seconded by Counselor Steve Gillespie. So we need a vote on the amendment? Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, Counselor, yeah, Counselor McDonald, then Counselor Early McMullen.
So on the 1/3, what happens to this, are we committed to this money? So what happens if, if we don't get the funding partners? Well, obviously, our 500,000 is safe. So what happens if we go ahead with the design and development, and then at some point, we decide, oh, we can't afford what's going on with libraries? So our 500,000 dollars is lost at that point?
That's, that's right.
Yep. It seems that way.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And it's more to follow up, I guess, with what Counselor McDonald just said. I think it's much larger than this, because if we do for the third, if we're lucky, our third is 50,000 versus 500,000. If the province and the feds decide that they will match that, which would be wonderful, then we, in turn, are fully committed to the new development, which, in, in, again, in principle, I'm totally in favor of it, because the whole idea is fine. But as a counselor sitting here and looking at the faces of our CFO and CAO when it comes to the finance to pay our share of $34 million and the yearly operating fees, am I secure and safe in saying that, oh, yeah, we can totally do that? I'm not. So I'm a little nervous in that if this passes, if I vote, okay, let's go and see if we can get the funding, the funding's there, we move forward, they have the development, it comes back that it's gonna be 50 million, are we obligated then, even in principle, to then move forward with the project that we're not sure we can afford by the discussion going around this table? So I guess I need clarity on that. Because I, I do, I really don't, I'm stuttering and everything, because I really don't feel, normally, if it was cheap and the province was paying for it, I'm all for it, man, bring in the study, we've done that before. But for me to verify to our residents that, yeah, okay, we just signed off a half a million dollars, but we're not 100% sure we're gonna go through with it if it comes back, I'm not secure.
The solicitor has clarified that we would only be bound to the 1/3 contribution, not the overall project.
Right now, we're funding, I think the intent is to fund design development, because that's the only way you're gonna get to a funding application for the project. Okay? But you're not committing to the, to the project. Okay? You're committing to getting a study done for design development-
But this study is specifically towards this particular project?
Yes, it is.
Not a different location?
No, it's, it's committed, it's to this waterfront project.
Thank you.
Okay, so I had Counselor Steve Gillespie, then Counselor Perusch.
Thank you, Mayor McDougal. Just when it comes to studies, I'm not a big fan of them, but obviously, there's a reason for them, and that's why we do fund them. We have done studies before. Does anyone have any idea how much the study cost in 2016? No? Okay, so I'm assuming it didn't cost $4? Okay, all right, so we have studies, we've done studies before. If this doesn't tie us into anything, I don't see a reason why we couldn't do another one, but I am concerned that we're gonna study this to death. Thank you.
Next, we have Counselor Perusch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm a tad bit confused here, the way that we're going in circles here. So this, are we, when we say a third, so we could, I'll just use the number 500,000, because that's what we're using, we could say that we're committing this money, and then all of a sudden, we don't go through with that project? So this is like our very first council meeting, when we gave the port money? And then all of a sudden, we were fed to the wolves on the same thing? So for clarity purposes, we could throw away 500,000, and then all of a sudden, there's no library down at the waterfront? Is that what you're telling me?
Potentially, we could commit 500,000 to a design study and not be able to follow through on the overall build, yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, my understanding is, this is not a study. This is a development design. They're actually gonna tell you what it costs to build this out, based on the scope of what we want. If it comes back 50, we so choose that it's too much money. We cut it back. It is what you want it to be. At the end of the day, you have a design development that you can take to your funders and say, here's what it's gonna cost to build it, the library. Now, after these folks have put in a half a million dollars each, it's in my experience, they bought into the program. They bought into the project, depending on, of course, the total costs. And that's a negotiation that you go back and forth with. But until we do that, you can't have that conversation. So is it my feeling that we're gonna lose a half a million dollars? No. I think if the federal and provincial government, who just put oodles of money into another infrastructure fund to identify things that need to be built across the country, if we get their money in on the development stage, they'll be willing partners on the actual project. They're not gonna put money in if they're not willing to support it, in my experience. Thank you.
So the current motion is in regards to the amendment to add in a 1/3 commitment from the CBRM? Is there any further? Counselor Darren Brooks-Schweiger?
So, so as pointed out, Madam Mayor, like, that's why I asked the question if it's 1.5 million dollars, because if it's 200, you know, you know, if it's 200, or 2 million, we're into it for near 7 million, right? And at the end of the day, I can say this right here for anybody to know. If the design is done, and it comes back that we're up for 12 million bucks, even if the feds and the province are there, I'm not there. We don't, the taxpayers can't afford that build. Now, if it's something else, if it's 5 or 6 million, right? Some may suggest that, you know, the talk of we'll build it and everybody's gonna come. Well, we've been building. And all I'm saying is that, I'm just putting this out on the floor today for people to know. I can support it to get it to that point, to find out what the total build would be, okay? But in the meantime, I have to know when it comes back that there's gonna be other funding partners there to help our share. I'm saying it up for the record right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Any, oh, Counselor Darren O'Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wondering, when you're, when, when you make the location just one place at the waterfront, and you're excluding any other, you know, are, are you really limiting yourself there? Like, I, I do want to see a new library, and I'm very supportive of a new library, but, but like Darren, I think we should do it the most cost-effective way we can. And if it's gonna cost 3 million more at the waterfront, maybe we should, you know, really pursue other, other options. Like, I know we need a new library, and I fully support that. It's just that I don't want to cut out anything with, with their motion. If, if we do that, are we, can we go back and look at a new location? If we just go with Eldon's motion, or is that something we can do, or?
Counsel entered into an agreement with HRDL to work collaboratively on this project. Okay? That agreement was for a certain amount of time with certain deliverables. It was extended. We are committed to work towards that development. Okay? We got, counsel entered into an agreement that that library was gonna be part of that development, right? So to say, you can say you're not gonna fund a library. There's no commitment to fund a library. There's no commitment, any, for any money. However, to say, okay, we're, we're gonna look at different sites, and right until June, we're committed to work with, with-
You're looking at that one just until June.
At this development.
Thank you, Rudy.
We're not married, but probably engaged right now until June.
A promise ring for sure, right?
Any further discussion on the amendment? So to be clear, oh, Deputy Mayor?
Madam Mayor, through you to the solicitor, because he just made me ask yet another question. Seeing as we're engaged, if this goes around and it's not agreed upon, are we outside of the contract then?
No, there's no commitment to put any money into the library.
Okay.
All right? If we're saying, no, we're not going to fund design, and, you know, if HRDL wants to fund design, they can, but there is no commitment, the council put up any money other than in-kind costs and the land and that kind of thing, right? Now, you're not going to get anywhere if you don't go anywhere, you're just spinning your wheels, but there's no commitment for any money.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, question has been called. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, nay. Amendment, motion to approve the amendment has been passed. Now, the motion still remains on the floor. Counselor McDonald, do you want to read your motion just one more time? I don't want to... I don't know if I can cite it back.
Maybe we can check with the recording secretary.
Yeah, well, actually, thanks very much, Madam Mayor. And that's just what I was going to suggest. I think we were going to have to rely on the recordings and the minutes, because I didn't state my motion as written here.
Okay.
I tried to change it a bit so that it wouldn't be cumbersome. Obviously, it was cumbersome, but I tried to make it as easy and simple as possible. So I think we're going to have to rely on my statements in regards to the minutes for the recordings.
So can we get it read back, perhaps? No?
Counselor can't read it. I don't know if we'll be able to catch it with what we see to the audio.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, the only thing I can say is, I'm generalizing, so again, it's not going to be exact wording, but it was to, you know, approve the service program operational plan as submitted by TCI management consultant's report.
If I can, Madam Mayor, just on a point of clarification, he continues to say operational. I think what we're looking for here, if I could sum it up, we're looking for a design concept to go to our funding partners.
Correct.
Is what we're looking for. Operational has nothing to do with this point. We're not at that point in terms of the project, with all due respects to the counselor. So that's my understanding, is we're just looking for the design concept, which is the 1/3, and that's my understanding of what we're looking for here. If I'm missing something?
If I could give clarity, Madam Mayor, if I could. So I guess when I'm saying that, that's actually the title of the report. So that's why I'm referencing those words, because that's the title of the TCI report. It's the service program operational report as submitted by TCI. So that's the name of the report. That's the only reason I'm mentioning that. It's not that I'm getting into the actual operational. It's just, that was the name of the report. That's why I referenced it, because I wanted that report referenced in my motion. So I don't know if that adds any clarity, but...
No, no, it doesn't.
In fact, no. In fact, it makes it more confusing. It's very simple that we're looking for a design concept is what we're looking for. If I'm missing something, somebody can tell me that. But we're looking for the 1/3 to go to design concept, so that we can go to the funding partners and say, here's what we have as a design. This is the design, this is the build. That's my understanding. If I'm missing something, somebody needs to clarify, because that's all I think we're looking for at this point, is the design concept. I mean, you can actually go to the presenters, and I'm sure they'll probably clarify it for us if we need to do that.
This is a motion of council, so I think we need to figure it out ourselves. Okay, Counselor, it's your motion. Again, I can't speak to it, so we just need to clarify what this motion is on the floor right now.
I'm doing my best to do that, Madam Mayor.
Nope, I agree. It's just tricky right now.
I guess my hesitation is, you know, we were already in a funding meeting, and clarity was needed. So I'm trying to reference reports so that we actually have documents that back up what our motion is, as opposed to it just being a motion. So when I reference the TCI management consultant's report, it's based on the findings of that document that we'd be funding and looking for this design concept, as well as the reference to the HRDL waterfront library, to give clarity that that's the location we're referring to. So those are specifically to add clarity, so that when we get in the room with funding partners, that everyone is clear that it is the library that's referenced in the TCI report, it's the one that's referenced in the HRD project, HRDL, pardon me, project. So it's to try to bring the clarity to the funding partners, because clarity was asked for, and I think it's clear that if we're referencing that report and we're referencing that actual location, that should be clear to the other funding partners.
I'll try this, then. So the motion would be, in reference to the TCI report, and based on conceptual design from the HRDL waterfront development, CBRM will pursue funding in the form of 1/3 formula... Oh, wait. Pursue the funding in a 1/3, 1/3, 1/3 formula to funding partners for the design phase of this project. Is that everything that needs to be in there? Design and development. It will be formulated somehow. Counselor Gillespie?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that we're tendering this, right? Once it goes through that process, it will be tendered?
We are obliged to tender this. We have to, yeah. Any further discussion on the motion? Deputy Mayor?
I promise this is the last time I'm going to talk, but I am, I just want to put it out there, because I know I'm going to get some backlash for how this is going to go around the table, but potentially, half a million dollars, give or take whatever the amount is, is relying on the decision I make as a counselor that I support the current location fiscally, and that we can afford it and we can run it. So I just want to make it clear that my decision to support this going forward is based on my thought on where I sit with the current location and the fiscal responsibility to the CBRM. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Question?
Question has been called. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, nay?
Nay.
Will go around the table. Counselor Gordon McDonald?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor McMullin?
Nope.
Counselor Cyril McDonald?
No.
Counselor Gillespie?
No.
Counselor McDonald, or Eldon McDonald, sorry?
Aye.
Counselor Glenn Perusch?
Nope.
Counselor Steve Parsons? Counselor James Edwards?
Aye.
Counselor Ken Tracy?
No.
Counselor Darren Brochweiger?
No.
Counselor Darren O'Quinn?
Nay.
Counselor Lauren Green?
Nay.
Myself, nay. Motion is not passed. So where do we move from here? It's been a lot of discussion, a great deal of discussion, and I am incredibly appreciative of everybody in this room today for offering their time, their efforts. What we need to do right now is continue to pursue a central library. We will continue. Myself, Marie, John, and the deputy are actually, as of this morning, confirmed to meet with the premier and deputy minister of municipal affairs next week. This will be top of the list to discuss how do we move forward with a central library. Counselor Parsons?
I'm beaming, I didn't speak, Mayor. I understand the votes, no question. But whether we have another discussion with the premier or whoever, we're still going to have to put some money into design, whether it's a $10 million, a $20 million. It's still going to cost some money to go into a library. That's all I'd say. Thank you.
So we need advice. We need advice from our funding partners how to move forward. I think at this point, there's too many questions up in the air for anybody to feel confident doing any one, or making any one decision, and that was clear from our collective discussions and agreement today. What I do promise everyone is that we will continue working very, very hard. We have until June to work with our partners in HRDL, and perhaps there is something that comes up through new funding opportunities.